Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 3, 2025, meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Yes, council members Asatrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Here.
Carpetian.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Next up is the flag salute, and I'd like to state that we've got some special guests from the community, the scouts from PAC 131 Verdugo Woodlands and their leaders. So come right up. And are you all ready?
Yes.
Okay, ready? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much for that wonderful rendition. Would the leader like to just tell us who we heard from and what you do?
This is the Webelos Den from PAC 131 at the Verdugo Woodlands Dads Club. And these are mostly, this den is fourth graders who are about to bridge over into the next age, but we're right now Webelos, the second highest rank of the Cub Scouts. And this is our den. So thank you very much for having me.
And you can have a seat. Thank you. But everyone remain standing. The invocation will be delivered by Chaplain James Rorig from the Glendale Fire Department.
Good evening. My name is James Rorig. I work as both a fireman and as the fire chaplain for the city of Glendale. And I'm honored to be invited here tonight by Mayor Arnajarian to give this invocation. So thank you, sir. And also thank you all of City Council for having me here tonight. Before I go any further, real quick, I just wanted to say that I'm a product of this great city. I was born and raised in Glendale, went through the local school systems, and then in 2010, I was hired by the fire department that I had dreamt about working at when I was a kid. Growing up in the city, I was raised and taught by not just my parents, but also by my teachers, my coaches. I was also taught by mentors and other community leaders. I learned lifelong lessons about how to treat others with kindness and compassion and how to have humility. As a 15-year Glendale fireman, I now get the opportunity to invest in and pour back into this great city. In Ephesians, Scripture tells us to be kind and compassionate to one another. And in Colossians, we are also taught to clothe ourselves with compassion, kindness, humility, gentleness, and patience. And that's my continued prayer for this city. So with that, please bow your heads with me as I pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for tonight, and thank you for everyone here as well. Thank you for placing people in positions of leadership to guide, provide, and protect the city, instill the values of kindness, compassion, and humility to those making critical decisions that ultimately shape and mold this city into what it is. Be with us now and bestow your wisdom upon us. Lord, ask that you bless everyone here tonight, bless their families, and bless the city of Glendale. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Clerk, may we have your report?
Yes, the agenda for the June 3, 2025, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on May 30, 2025, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what's the next item?
Next are presentations and appointments. The first item is agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, June 10, 2025, by Assistant City Manager John Tachalian.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Next week, we'll have two meetings. The first in the afternoon will be a special meeting of the City Council with one item on the agenda. Sorry?
I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now? Sorry, maybe they can turn the mic up from downstairs. The first item on the special meeting is going to be an award of a contract for operations of tennis courts at the Glorieta and Fremont Parks. For the City Council meeting, we have three consent items. Two of them are from Library Arts and Culture. The first item would be related to the Arts and Culture Commission's recommendation to fund performances and film screenings for the Alex Theater's 100th Birthday Celebration. The next item from that department will be a contract change order for Midwest Tape LLC for Hoopla Digital Services. Last item, under consent, will be from our Public Works Department related to our solid waste collection rates update. We also have one action item that evening from the City Attorney's Office related to the review of the mayor's selection process. That concludes next week's preview.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, let's take three C, the Pride Month designation before the community satisfaction survey.
Sure. Item C is proclamation designating June as Pride Month.
Thank you. Are there members in the audience here to receive proclamations, commendations? You can come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian and members of the City of Council. My name is Sarah Kojayan. I'm the vice chair of Commission on the Status of Woman. I would like to introduce Commissioner Ramella Markarian. On behalf of the Commission on the Status of Woman, I want to thank you for this 2025 Pride Month proclamation, which we were proud to support at our May 12 meeting. Supporting the rights of LGBTQ+ individuals is part of our mission to promote equity, justice, and equal opportunities for all women and girls in Glendale, including those who are part of LGBTQ+ community. Pride Month remind us that while each person is unique, everyone deserves equal rights, dignity, and respect. The Commission recognized the bravery of those who fought for LGBTQ rights and who continue to create safe, inclusive spaces in our city. Thank you again for this meaningful proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have other members? Would you like to make an introduction before we do the proclamation?
Good evening. My name is Sean Chalterosian, and I am here on behalf of Glendale Out, a local grassroots organization dedicated to building, evolving, and moving forward the local LGBT+ community. First, I would like to thank the Commission on the Status of Woman for their unwavering allyship. They have remained committed to the ideals of the City Council's previous Pride Month declarations, proclamations, rather. As you may know, the City Council has spent the last several weeks arguing about procedures for what should have been a very simple request, giving city support to an annual Pride Month event by and for the local community. As neighboring cities have grown their support for their LGBT+ communities, the city of Glendale has retreated when confronted by a loud minority of bigots. I ask that, moving forward, the city of Glendale protect and grow its relationships with its marginalized communities and not try to appease bigots. Until such time, proclamations are not worth the paper on which they are printed, unfortunately. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And that's the door in the rear. The city of Glendale proclaims June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, honoring the history, strength, and contributions of the LGBTQIA+ community. We support a community where residents feel seen, respected, and valued. And Mr. Brotman, would you please present this to who's ever here left to receive? Okay, I think this is just a photo op, so. And, Madam Clerk, aren't any cards on this issue?
No.
Would you please read the next item?
The next item, item B, is 2025 Community Satisfaction Survey Results.
Thank you, Mr. Galania.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of City Council. Excuse me. Earlier this year, I engaged the services of FM3, a very reputable research firm, to conduct a community satisfaction survey with the goal of essentially gauging the community's, our residents' satisfaction with many services that we provide, and input on issues of concern as well as priority areas for the future and opportunities for improvement. I'm very pleased with the overall results of the survey that proved eight out of 10 people in our community who responded to the survey are satisfied or very satisfied with the myriad of services that we provide. And I attribute this to the dedication and hard work of the men and women of this organization who day in and day out, some in the evenings and at night, 24 hours, 24/7, provide these services to the community. I'd like to note that this was a totally independent, third-party effort and survey, and I had no influence on the outcome, methodology, or any input that went into the survey or the report that you will see shortly. With that, I'd also like to add that we, as the organization, will use this data, this information, this document, to align our strategic plan and goals with the priorities of the community and council moving forward and make every effort to address the areas of concern in the coming months and years. With that, I'd like to introduce Dr. Richard Bernard, who is the lead researcher and partner with FM3 Research Company.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Did you say eight out of 10?
Eight out of 10, yes, sir.
And if you extrapolate with a population of 200,000, that would mean 160,000 residents are happy?
Based on that explanation, yes. Satisfied or very satisfied?
Eight out of 10. That's amazing. Eight out of 10. I'm not stealing your thunder, am I?
No, I, well.
Drop the mic.
I'm gonna turn it back over to you and just zip it up for now.
All right, no, I appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, residents. Thank you for inviting me to present the results of your community survey. We conducted the survey between March 5 and the 19th of this year. It was a dual-mode survey, which means a random portion of the respondents took the survey online and a random portion on the phone. We interviewed in total a random sample of 839 registered voters. For questions asked of everyone, the margin of error is plus or minus 3.5, which is quite small, which is good, because there's a lot of certainty in those results. We contacted people by telephone, email, and text, and we've had the privilege to have conducted surveys in the past for your city in 2014, 2016, and 2018. And so where we have similar questions, we will show you some track data. And of course, we provided the survey in English, Armenian, Korean, and Spanish. And just to note, 7% opted to take it in Armenian, 2% in Korean, and 3% in Spanish. If you're very quick on math and notice something doesn't quite equal 100%, I blame that entirely on rounding. So I want to start off by talking a little bit about sort of the macro, general perceptions of the city. We asked them, in general, do they think the city is, how would they rate it as a place to live? And we gave them the option of excellent, pretty good, just fair, or poor. Just fair typically means about average. And you could see the dark blue and the bright blue bars are excellent and pretty good. I've aggregated them on the right-hand side, and you'll see the comparative from previous years. So there, you have eight in 10 saying that as a place to live, the city is excellent or pretty good, which is a very good number. I do this for a living, and I see this in a lot of cities, and this suggests a very strong satisfaction with Glendale in general. And I thought you might be interested to look very briefly at the opinions of excellent and pretty good across the city, which range in a very high percentage. Remember, because it's a smaller sample of each group, the margin of error is a little larger. But nonetheless, strong feelings of the city is a good place or excellent place to live. In previously referenced satisfaction for the general services overall, I'll get into detailed services in a moment. You could see that the dark blue is very satisfied, and the bright blue is somewhat satisfied. And you've got 79%, effectively eight in 10, as the city manager reported and as the mayor confirmed, are very or somewhat satisfied with the services overall in the city. I'll just remind you that it is, as much as I'd like to say that it was all residents 18+, it was registered voters, which is almost all residents, so a little bit less than the number you suggested, but still eight in 10 is a strong number. In this day and age where people are kind of polarized and feeling a little queasy about government overall, for you to get a 79% rating is a very, very good number, and we're not seeing this in every city. So you're one of the cities that stand out. We gave voters at the beginning of the survey an opportunity to express their top-of-mind opinion about what do they like best in living in Glendale. And we took their responses, and we took themes for the responses and presented them here. And I'll just point out, we accepted multiple responses. So if you're doing fast math, and if it does equal more than 100%, you'll understand why, because people can give multiple reasons what they like about living in Glendale. Among the top items was, they felt it was a safe city, and they liked the location. It was near places that were important to them. And they felt, again, similar to the safe, that it was orderly, the clean streets. And I wanted to point out something that I don't see in a lot of cities as top of mind. They reflected on the community and the strong cohesion in the community, and that makes something Glendale very special relative to some of the other cities that I have examined. And finally, with respect to just sort of macro questions, we asked, do they perceive there's a need for additional funds to provide the level of city services that residents need and want? And we offered them the answer of great need, some need, a little need, or no real need, or they volunteered they didn't know. And you've got almost one in 10 saying there's a great or some need, but you've got almost two in set 10 saying they don't know, which suggests it's an opportunity to tell your story as you go through budget deliberations if you perceive that there is a need for additional funds. So now I'd like to move to issues of concern in the community. Again, we asked an open-ended question, so in their own words prior to giving them any other questions, so we're not biasing in any way. We asked them, what do they think is the most serious issue facing residents of Glendale that they'd like to see city government do something about? Again, we took their open-ended answers in their own words, and we thematized them and grouped those answers together, and we accepted multiple responses. The top three items you will see throughout the survey as the challenges in the city. The perception of reckless speeding-traffic safety issues related to that. I don't, I've seen this becoming a bigger issue in a variety of cities in California. However, I don't think I've ever seen it being the top issue in any one city, so that's something to be mindful of. Certainly, issues related to affordable housing and rent control are a top-of-mind issue across California, and so your city is not unique to that. And then I wanted to point out here, while cost of living is kind of beyond your control, you can't really control the price of goods, there is a concern, and you'll see this in a moment specifically, about issues related to utility costs. Those seem to be the top three items, though you could see there are other items further down the list. So then we presented them with 28 items randomly, so people heard it in different orders not to bias it. And we asked them, here's an issue, how serious a problem is it in the city of Glendale? The bright orange is very serious problem. The dull orange is somewhat serious problem. I've aggregated and ranked the variant somewhat serious problem on the right-hand side, and you'll see that theme that I just mentioned again, the cost of housing, speeding, and unsafe driving. And then you'll see both in three and five, the issue related around utility charges. Those seem to be the major issues of concern in this list of 28 items. I do want to point out that I believe the city will be posting these results tomorrow, so I'm not going to go into every single slide in detail, but people will be able to look at every one of those items at their leisure. And as we go down the list, four pages on the bottom end in terms of things that they don't perceive as being a major problem in the city, though I don't minimize 30% or 19%, gangs and juvenile violence. Typically, I see this as a much higher number in a lot of Southern California cities, but that wasn't the case here, so that's good news. And the availability of recreational programs for Glendale residents, clearly, a disproportionate number of people see that that's not much of a problem in the city, and they certainly see the, they don't see the lack of restaurants and entertainment options as a problem at all. There's enough, or at least a lot of things to do in your city. Now I want to move to, you'll remember, I asked a question about and presented a question about the general satisfaction of services, and again, the city manager pointed that out. But now I want to look at very specific city services to drill down a little bit more. We asked about 28 city services uniquely, and we gave them, the question was a scale of one to seven, where one is not at all satisfied, and seven is very satisfied. And I've taken the sixes and sevens, which are in the high end of the scale, and I've made them dark blue, so you could see folks, how they ranked them for very satisfied. I also took the average from one to seven, and that's how I ranked these particular slides. Now, the midpoint, the neutral, neither satisfied or unsatisfied, is four. So any item above four would suggest they're in the satisfied range. And you have many, by the way. Among the top-scoring items are fire protection and paramedic services. And to be frank, I rarely see a citizen satisfaction survey where fire isn't number one, so it's not unique here. There's a strong appreciation for firefighters and paramedics and what they do. And of course, particularly after we saw the horrific fires in the city of LA and neighboring communities. Library services, I don't typically see that among the highest, but it scores very high here. 911 emergency response, pickup of garbage, yard waste, and recyclables are typically, in well-run cities, that scores well, so consistent. And you can see the balance of the list here. As I go down, I do want to point out some of the lower-scoring items for you to be mindful of. One is addressing homelessness. Clearly, Measure A just passed, the money's just only starting to be collected in the county. The question is, are they going to trickle down that money to local governments? You know, I guess that's something you'll be mindful of. Management of city government finances. I want to point out that three in 10 weren't able to answer that question, but typically people, particularly at a time like this where there's a lot of discussion about waste and mismanagement on all levels of government, I think you will, there's a trickle-down effect to all levels of government, because all we do is hear it on a federal level all the time. And so there's a perception there. And then finally, again, to point out the point I've been making previously, addressing speeding and unsafe driving. Clearly, an issue that is prominent in your community, and we test it in a variety of different ways. We then gave them a series of potential policy priorities that perhaps the city is considering, but they haven't moved directly forward on it, to see if they're in sync with the community. And we gave them this list of policies, and we asked them, is this a high priority, the dark blue, a medium priority, bright blue, a low priority, the dull orange, or not a priority at all, which is bright orange? Or they volunteered they didn't know. I've aggregated the high and medium priorities on the right-hand side and ranked it as such. However, I do want to point out, the top items, the top three, are repairing outdated, deteriorating local fire stations to meet current needs and retrofitting them for earthquake safety, prioritizing housing, again, connected to the concerns about housing costs in the city, and making it faster and easier for residents and businesses to receive city permits, so a process issue related to that. And I know the city has talked a lot about and moved forward on issues related to hiring additional qualified police officers, and this nicely matches among the high priorities of your residents. And then the balance of the examples as you go down, on the lower side include installing more public art pieces in the city. That doesn't mean they don't appreciate it, but among the other comparative ones, it's a lower priority compared to the fire stations and such. We asked one very specific series of questions about the sense of safety, and we asked how people, if people felt safe walking around either in their neighborhood, downtown Glendale, or the park closest to them. The dark blue is very safe, and the bright blue is somewhat safe. I've aggregated the total safe on the right-hand side. The dull orange is somewhat unsafe, and the bright orange is very unsafe. Again, I've aggregated it on the right-hand side. What strikes me is that these numbers are extremely high on the opinion of feeling safe. I don't think I've seen as high numbers, particularly around the park closest to you. And what I didn't tell you is, it's walking around at night, so it's not in the day. And typically, I see a much lower number in most communities about that. So it suggests to me that there is a sense of feeling safe, at least with respect to walking around these various places. And then finally, I want to, we were asked to ask about sources of information. Where do they get their sources of information about Glendale program events and issues? We asked them, how frequently did they use these various sources? Again, these were randomized to make sure there was no bias effect. We asked them, is it frequently, which is the dark blue, occasionally, which is the bright blue, rarely is the dull orange, and the bright orange is never, and the gray are the people who said they didn't know? I've taken the frequently and occasionally and ranked it, combined them and ranked them on the right-hand side. Number one, word of mouth, they hear from family and friends. That's not unusual. People talk, you know, to people close to them, and they also trust them as validators. The city of Glendale and department websites, one in every two use it frequently and occasionally. I think this is a relatively high number, and you should take a lot of pride in the, with respect to your website. Now, people may not log on to it every day, but when they need to, it's there, and they're clearly using it and indicating it. The benefits of having a utility is that you can provide utility bill inserts, and clearly, that's a way to communicate, as well as road construction or other public work development notifications. As we go down the list, you will start to see a lot of social media, which you and other cities will often rely on to communicate. And I would simply say that there really is not one silver bullet here, and that it would be my recommendation, as you see very low numbers as we go down this list, that you communicate in a variety of different ways, so they're hearing it from a number of different sources and then communicating it to their friends and family. So in conclusion, eight in 10 have favorable views of Glendale as a place to live and are satisfied with the overall job performance being provided. So that speaks well, clearly, as the city manager says, to all the city staff who work incredibly hard, as well as the council who, they work on your direction. There's a perception the city is safe and There's a perception the city is safe and orderly, and it's a great location to live in, there's strong feelings of, it's a really cohesive community. Almost one in two perceive the city as a need for at least some additional funds, and this will be an important element that you may want to discuss in your budget deliberations. Concerns about traffic safety, affordable housing, cost of living, and the crime and public safety were the volunteer top reasons. However, as I've mentioned a number of times here, cost of housing, speeding, and unsafe driving, and the cost of utilities are considered serious problems, and you should be mindful of. In terms of top-satisfied services, of which there are many, the lead ones are fire and paramedic protection, library services, 911 response, and the pickup of garbage, yard waste, and recyclables. Among the top priority policies are addressing the need to upgrade the fire stations, prioritizing housing for low-income seniors and veterans, and people with disability, and making it faster to deal with permits in the city. Perceptions of safety, as I mentioned before, people generally feel quite safe walking around their neighborhood at night, parks, and downtown Glendale. And then finally, in terms of the frequency of use of sources of information, it's word of mouth, but what's in your control are clearly a very strong website and the uses of it by the department and the utility bill insert. And I would just again encourage you to communicate in multiple ways on social media, so people actually get an access to what you're trying to say. And with that, thank you for your patience, sorry it was so long, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Satyrion has a question.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
The answers for getting the word out through our utility, do you have a breakdown of age group?
Okay, hold on, let's see if I do. I don't have it here, but that's something I can certainly get to. I mean, my experience from my observations, it's typically younger people are a little bit more into social media than the more traditional ways of getting information, so that's one thing I can share.
I mean, I don't check my mail. I check it every so often, but everything's like online. I had, I think when we all had our briefings, initially I had requested the raw data.
And I have provided.
Okay, okay, if I can, okay. Can you sign it again? Okay. Thank you.
We have a couple speakers, let's take them first, and we'll come back to council.
Our first speaker is Mike Mohal. You have three minutes.
Mike, so were you on the eight out of 10 side, or were you on the two out of 10 side? We'll listen, we'll listen for your comments.
Well, you know, I wasn't going to talk on this subject at all. I was busy going through the paper book that the expert did, and up there it says, they mentioned Creston Valley Weekly sourced, or whatever that, but I saw the name, Creston Valley. Then I saw the name Glendale News Press. But you know what I didn't see? Your Glendale Community Newsletter, probably the most read newsletter in the city of Glendale. The first thing, I get thousands of hits when I send out my newsletter every day. I get, I probably have more readership in an hour than the News Press and the CV Weekly. Patting myself on the back, you're right. But why wasn't I included? What am I, chopped liver? Thank you.
So just for discussion purposes, Mr. Mohal does put out a letter, a newsletter. Where would that fall in the sources of communication? Would it fit in any one of those categories?
I couldn't even guess. I mean, I take him at his word, but I can't tell you.
Have you ever, have you ever read my newsletter, sir?
I have not.
Thank you, Mr. Mohal, you can get your, you can get your subscriptions later.
Have you read the CV Weekly or the Glendale News Press? Then I bet you have, but not, but not our newsletter, ours is electronic.
There's great pictures in it too, let me tell you.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mohal, thank you, thank you. Next. Thank you for coming forward.
Some of them are, what's X-rated, some of them?
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is online, Fernando Roldan, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Unfortunately, with this survey, I'm a little disappointed, because for a couple of reasons. First of all, I didn't even know about the survey until now, so what does that mean? The survey could have been marketed better, maybe if you folks would have put some signs all over the city, at least, so some of us can use QR codes and all. And second, you know, disability was still a little weak in this side of the survey. I mean, as a person with a disability myself, I, if I would have known this, I could have added my two cents on all this, and would have made more, and more, much more improvements for the city of Glendale, housing being one of them, and of course, the high cost of rents, of course, for some of us who are not just, and low class of, or the low budget of how we live, but also some of us who are middle-class and can't afford it because of our salaries and all. So again, this is something that, once again, the city is going to have to really take this into consideration for next year, and expand a little bit more, especially for people with disabilities. And as usual, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, that's my two cents. Thank you.
So briefly, I think that raises a question. Can you explain the survey sampling technique that was implemented in this process?
Sure, sure. So this wasn't a convenience sample where you stuck a link online and everyone can click into it. This was a systematic survey that took a random sample of all registered voters, and we made sure that the demographics of all your registered voters mirrored the respondents' demographics, so it mirrored out. Many of the opinions that were presented in this last question came out in that survey. I mean, he's right on, that concerns about cost of living, current concerns about housing, concerns about housing related to people with disability. So there, I mean, I think his, I mean, I won't speak for his comments, but his opinions were clearly expressed in the, among other residents in the city.
Thank you. Okay, council, any comments, questions? Mr. Kasakian.
Thank you. For the part where it says how people hear about information from the city, is there, in your experience, and these were somewhat kind of typical, albeit expected and unfortunate answers, that most people aren't following a lot of the social media, even the local papers, I dare say even perhaps newsletters, but in other agencies and cities that you've conducted this survey, is there anything that stands out? Is there anyone that's doing something better that we could learn from?
Well, I would say in some cities, the local papers are much stronger. I've certainly seen that. For example, in the city of Chino, the Chino Champion seemed to score very high, is just one illustrative example. In terms of what the city can do, I mean, you have an advantage because you have these utility inserts. So that's something you, if you're not taking enough advantage of, you may want to. Some cities have begun to do more print, which I know is sort of counter where everyone's going in terms of the environment and in terms of costs. But the park and rec guides typically are the items that people keep in their home longer than anyone else, right? Because there are programs that are coming up, and they'll want to know, either for, if you're a senior, or you have kids, or even as an adult, you may want to be involved. So that's an opportunity, if you have a physical copy, to keep it on your bookshelf or near your phone, or wherever you keep your materials, because most of the things that come from government, people look at for a second, and if there's no reason to hold on to, they're going to hopefully recycle it rather than toss it out, but they're not keeping it. So that might be one answer to your question.
Any city that particularly, or agency that you could share with us, you don't have to do it here unless you feel comfortable to, for whom the website or their digital forms of communication ranked higher than what the base is for most agencies?
Well, I would simply say your website scores among the higher, on the higher side, so I'll speak, I'll say something positive about, you know, you have an opportunity here, because clearly, people, one in every two is really good. So I think I would, I kind of focus on that, and maybe use that as a vehicle to get people to, onto other platforms you have.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Carpechan, any comments?
I just want to summarize what my understanding is from this whole report, and I think we're all on the same page, so. Basically, the community is satisfied about the public safety, police and fire, and all the services that we're providing. It's a great place to live, centralized location, it's a safe city, and the concerns are more about traffic safety, speeding, reckless driving, that's one category that is, that's one of my concerns, utility rates, affordable housing and cost of housing in general. But they feel safe walking around their neighborhoods.
Councilmember Carpechan, thank you.
Sorry about that. Should I start over again? So I think overall, I'm pleased with the results that I'm seeing as a resident of the city, especially with, you know, the services that we provide, and the public safety, and the fire and police. Walking around neighborhoods, 92%, that's amazing, that's amazing. And although we are short in, you know, parkland in Glendale, but again, 77% are satisfied to walk to a park, somehow they get to a park by, as a walking distance. I was going to ask one other thing.
While you're looking, I just want to say, you summed up in so much fewer words what I just said for 10 minutes, or 15 minutes, so thank you very much, you did a great, you did a great job.
Thank you, thank you. So one other thing I wanted to mention was, the availability of adequate parking in residential area was Glendale, 69% they have serious concern or somewhat serious concern. So it's 69% they feel that we don't have enough street parking, basically, in residential neighborhoods. So, and that's due to developments that we had in the past, that maybe, I don't know, 10 units with four parking spaces, or six parking spaces, older developments. So with that, I think, that's all I have at this time. I think it's a great report for the community too, it's going to be online, so people can review it and, you know, make your own decision and form your own opinion, and if you have any questions, we can, you know, the city manager and the staff can ask, and the city manager, you're doing something right, the entire staff and our employees are working very hard, it's not an easy job, Assistant City Manager John Taktalian as well, and everyone around here. I think that the goal is to provide the best service that we can in general, and we're doing the best we can with our, with our resources. So, but that walking around neighborhoods, I thought it would be a lot less than that because of the concerns that we heard a lot about traffic safety and walkability, so that's very satisfying to me. Thank you.
Wow, that was a compliment, and in fact, I think it's well-deserved. And I'm not trying to toot your horn or anything, but it really reflects the hard work from our very online worker, from our line workers, the parks attendance, the desk attendance, the sanitation, all the way up, police, fire, and it's, it's part of the institutional, I guess, way of doing things, that we, the mentality, if you will, that we, we can only do so much on council, right? We pop in Tuesdays, maybe we bother you during the week for other things, some more than others, but you're here day in, I'm not looking at anybody, or I bother you, I give you my fair share of grief. But you and staff, and John, and all your department heads really have worked hard to get this report card, perhaps this should be seen as a report card, as well as a understanding of where our sentiments are as a community. So I couldn't be more happier on this. Mr. Brotman, did I recognize you?
No, I think everything's been said. I want to congratulate, well, I'll thank you for the work that you've done, and I'm glad we did this, I'm glad we did it the way we did it, a scientific sample-based survey that really kind of tells us, you know, with some accuracy, what people are feeling. Because what we see sometimes on social media, what we see sometimes here in this room, these tend to be a self-selected group of people who have strong opinions, usually, or in many cases, not necessarily favorable ones. So it's good to see us go out to the community in this way and really get a sense of where people's heads are. And, you know, it's good, especially in this time when there is, as you said, such a high level of distrust of government, and general dissatisfaction because of what we've gone through with COVID and inflation and everything. It's remarkable that we're actually as good as we are, so again, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. And this will be on the website?
Yes.
Okay, so I think this will be a great resource for folks in the community, as well as myself. I'll be, I know I'll be going back to it and seeing where we have perhaps some shortcomings where we could improve. So thank you very much, I appreciate it. There was a lot of buzz about this, I don't know if you were aware, but people were calling, hey, did you get that call about the survey? How come they're not calling me? I want to, you know, give my opinion, et cetera, and the word had gotten out that there were calls being made, and people were excited about it. Obviously, they wanted to partake, so.
If I may echo everyone else, but have my own to add, I've raised this time and again in the last several weeks with respect to our budget and our budget discussions. I have serious concerns about the way the budget sessions are being handled and the number that we have, given that we have a deficit in the city. I think we should be allocating more time to it, but looking to see again, how we're incorporating the results of this survey into our budgeting discussions, both in being able to upkeep the services that keep our residents and small businesses happy, as well as looking into making additional investments in areas that require additions and are a point of concern to our residents. The one thing that I would add, as I'm looking at this, we have roughly 114,000 registered voters in the city of Glendale, and I think we're more than 200,000. I think there's some issues with the census, especially the last census, and we talk about the large immigrant community that we have in the city of Glendale. While I'm taking in the information, I also take into account that some of the needs of the community are actually not being addressed in these responses, because the folks that have either immigrated here in recent years are not registered voters, but are paying taxes in our city, living in our city, doing business in our city, are not accounted for in their opinions and their needs, and I'm pretty confident their needs are a bit different, where they get their information is different, and how we service them has to also be different. And so, you know, I know we have a budget session tomorrow, Mr. Galanian, I know that you've brought up the strategic plan, but is there going to be some sort of conversation around the satisfaction survey before we implement the budget or adopt the budget?
Councilmember Satyrion.
Are we taking this into account, or have we taken into account what you've already proposed?
Councilmember Satyrion, I think there were three questions there. Yes, we were waiting the results, the final results of the survey to be public, but we have been working on crafting next year, or next three-year strategic plan based on the feedback we got from the resident town community as to their priority areas. That will be presented to council in the coming weeks. And yes, as you noted, we have gone through two budget study sessions, tomorrow morning will be a third one, where we will cover capital improvement programs. programs. So that is based essentially on the budget situation that we're facing right now, and again, the priorities that we have received from the community.
So it does incorporate the results?
We have, yes. And, and as you know, with the limited available resources we have and the budget shortfall that we're facing, rather than adding projects, programs to the budget, we have actually been forced to cut back on some of the planned projects. But moving forward, we will definitely have a heavy focus on, on these priority areas.
Okay. If that's it, this is a, a report and a presentation. We appreciate it. And thank you very much. Okay. Next items, please.
Next are consent items. The following routine may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Carpaccian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes, with the exception of the May 6 minutes from which I will abstain.
Okay. And Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Okay. Let's move on to item five, which is the City Council and Staff Comments. Who would like to go comment? Mr. Brotman?
No, I don't have anything today.
Councilmember?
Yeah, I'll just hold off.
In the interest of time.
In the interest of time. Okay. I'll just be brief. We had a great Let's Go Glendale event this weekend, on Saturday, where we closed Glendale Avenue from Lexington to Chevy Chase. It was a fun opportunity to get out on that big street in a bike, skateboard, scooter, whatever you had, your own two feet, and cruise up and down the neighborhood. My colleagues were all with me, and I hope the people that participated had a good time.
Yes.
Just, just one. I was hoping the Economic Development Department would actually make this announcement, but there was a launch of an amazing partnership between the city of Glendale and Famished, which is a company that's actually based in the city of Glendale. The program allows for our local restaurants to sign up for delivery, which would save them roughly 30 to 40% instead of using DoorDash or Uber Eats. If you're interested in signing up for this program or to learn more, you can contact our Economic Development Department or go to Famished's website, and they also have an Instagram account. But, Mr. Galanian, I think there's a lot of great programs that come out. Would be worthwhile to have staff from time to time come and announce things that are happening or partnerships that we've signed on on. I know our, we also had two parks that had renovated playgrounds that opened. All of these things should kind of be announced during council meetings as well. Thank you.
Any staff comments?
No, sir.
Very well. Let's move to the next item.
Next are community event announcements. Three minutes, five speaker limit per mayor policy. This item also permits speakers wishing to speak under general oral communications, subject to the three-minute time limit. Discussion is limited to matters not under agenda. We have five speakers for this item. The first speaker is Tony Passarella. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Council Tony Passarella. It's pretty hilarious to me, Mr. Brotman, you were so excited about the survey, what it revealed, but I was equally excited about what, what it revealed. 2% of the public think about climate change or concern about climate change. I bet none of your council colleagues even spend one minute a day thinking about that, and you spent all day thinking about that. 14% say there's a lack of transportation choices in Glendale, and 36%, that's a pretty good number, Mr. Brotman, are concerned about public safety. The U.S. Consumer Product and Safety Commission, CPSC, reported 360,800 emergency department visits related to micro mobility devices, e-bikes and e-scooters, Mr. Brotman, from 2017 to 2022. This is what's happening in Glendale right now. Before the fleet even hits the streets, we got e-bike riders riding on the sidewalks. I see it every day, all day. Next slide, Susie. You just okayed an agenda item, putting money into these sidewalk ramps for disabled? How concerned are we about the disabled being on the same street with, with a fleet of micro mobility devices, e-bikes and e-scooters? Next slide, Susie. Wait a minute. I, I want to go all the way back, go back to the, to the start.
No, it's a name. It's a name. She requests to be called Dr. Abadja, not the slide issue.
There, there's eight more. What happened to them? There you go. In a wheelchair. How concerned are we about those senior citizens? Next one. Okay, you got the parking enforcement guy, which, which is legal on the side, so he's on the sidewalk too. And we got the robots, the food robots. Next slide. Next slide. Okay, that's ridiculous. Mr. Brotman, the verdict is in. 76% rejected the North Brand bike lanes. Why are people going to accept your e-bikes and your e-scooters? They're not. There's no, there's not going to be any adoption. You're going to get complaints left, right, and center. And I'm going to come back. If you put them on the streets, I'm going to be relentless, just like all those emails I already sent all y'all. I sent you probably 20 emails already, and I got, I know you're not opening those, Mr. Brotman, but I got a record of them. I'm going to be happy to come back here if you put these on the street and somebody gets killed or injured and tell you I told you so.
Thank you, Mr. Passarella.
Our next speaker is Mike Mohill. You have three minutes.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I have a few items to talk about. Budget shortfall, budget shortfall. Why don't we get some money? How are we going to get some money? How about promoting Brand Boulevard of Cars? They used to do that years ago. Why don't we do that again? Promote Brand Boulevard of Cars. Number two, the Americana. Let's have an accounting of the Americana finances. Councilman Kasakian, you called Mr. Caruso, the Pope of, of Glendale. His hands are, nobody touches it. Let's have an accounting of the finances because we're, the taxpayers of Glendale are paying our bond. You know that. Let's have an accounting. Mention it within the budget. Let's hear about it this time. Okay? We have $1.2 billion unfunded pension obligations. How can we even consider giving $5,000 to Glendale out tonight? Think about before that issue comes up. Five, 1.2, is it, is $5,000 a chicken fee? Yes, when you don't have the money. Metro crime. You bring in buses and more buses, Mr. Kasakian? Look what happened in Santa Monica and Long Beach. Crime on those buses. We don't need any increased crime from the buses. Actually, people don't want buses. Yeah, they're fine. What, the buses we have right now are great, but do not remove traffic lanes or parking lanes for buses and bicycles. People have already spoken out against that. The majority, 76% already on Brand Boulevard, North Brand. What do you continue, Mr. Najarian? I know you're part of the Metro Board, and they're pushing this. But do a survey. Where's that, where's that survey? People want their cars. They don't want to give up their cars for buses or for bicycles or scooters. We are a mobile society. We want to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Michael Matsuda.
Well, greetings, Mayor and distinguished council members. My name is Michael Matsuda, and I am president of the Martial Arts History Museum, one of now three museums in our unofficial museum row in Glendale. The Museum of Neon Art, soon to be the Armenian Museum, and now the Martial Arts History Museum. Now, on paper, the museum opened its doors to a soft opening in April 2024. It was our hope to get our sign up on Brand Boulevard in about three or four months, and then we'd have an official grand opening with the celebrities, stars, lion dancing, and more. Well, unfortunately, it took more than one year to get our permits approved, including a variance and the actual signed permit. Thankfully, it all occurred about a week or two ago, and our sign is now up for all to see and find out about the museum. That is why I'm proud to announce the official grand opening of the museum this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. on June 7. We are thrilled to have some celebrities, the Japan Council General, and even Chinese lion dancing, and I hope this amazing council and the mayor will have the opportunity to take part in these festivities. But let me add about the museum. The museum is the first of its kind in the world. Its focus is not just about the punch and kick, but rather it's about art, history, culture and tradition, and how it connects with the martial arts. But not only do we focus on Asian arts, but our new partially-built Armenian section, Native American section, and Warrior Women's sections will be on display this week. Now, the museum hosts a number of humanitarian events as well. We work with a lot of dementia and Alzheimer's group. We work with a lot of groups that, who are children and adults who are mentally and physically challenged. We feel it's important to be an essential part of this community rather than just a place of unique items. I hope you and everyone will come to this event this weekend and support the museum. The event starts at 11:00 a.m. at the Olive Garden Courtyard and makes its way into the museum until 1:00 p.m., and there will have ribbon cutting, demonstrations, speeches, and more. But just let me add one more thing to the survey. You may try an online magazine. I used to be a publisher of magazine many years, and have your events, your, you know, upcoming stuff, things like that on an online magazine. Might do a lot of good as well. But that's it. That's all I got.
Congratulations.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Next is Karina Armin. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Karina Armin. I've been living in Glendale for 40 years, and I was a teacher at Glendale Unified for 32 years. I retired. So today, first of all, thank you for keeping Glendale safe and nice. Today, I just want to talk about better lights, more lights at Verdugo Park. I already sent an email to City Manager and Director of the Parks, and I got a reply that they, they're working on it to add more lights, especially during the summer concerts, but it might not be this summer. So, I'm always concerned about safety as a teacher. Like, I walk, I pick up things. Like, even last summer, I was picking up branches, and there are elderly children, and by the time it's sunset, when we clean up, it's really dark, really dark. I've seen you there, you know. And I park on Canyada Boulevard, and last summer I used this. It was really dark. So I'm concerned. And please, please, like teachers, let's cut the bureaucracy and do something, because by the time we went for the budget, our classrooms will be. We spend so much on classroom supplies. And with these fires, I end up buying this for my building. I'm a renter, but I share it with my neighbors. I bought lots of these solar things. I put it on the walkways. If I waited for my landlord, forget it, because for two days we didn't have, so I bought lights for everywhere, for my home, my friends. So, give the job to teachers. Can we put this on the trees? Do something for summer concerts? Cut the bureaucracy? Thank you. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. The next speaker is Edgman Hagopion. You have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Edgman Hagopion. I want to start first by thanking our first responders for keeping our community safe. I'm here today in support of my Jewish friends and neighbors. I want to condemn the recent terrorist attacks against Jews, the anti-Semitic, anti-Semitic rhetoric that has impacted the Jewish community across the U.S. Attacking peaceful protesters is not just anti-Semitic, it's against our American values. I want to urge the council members to pass a resolution condemning these attacks, and also to take measures ensuring the safety of our Jewish community centers within Glendale. Thank you.
That is all.
That is all. Okay. We will then close this portion of community announcements and move to the next item, please. Okay. Is that a community event announcement, or, well, is it regarding a particular agenda item? Pause it. Let's just hold on one second. What, what do we have?
He's under oral communication.
You get five minutes at the end, or you can do it now for three minutes. Okay, you get five, you get a full five at the end. Okay, next, please.
Next is adoption of ordinances. Item A, City Attorney Regarding Adoption of Rules Pertaining to Council Meeting Procedures and Decorum Continued from May 20, 2025. One Ordinance Amending Glendale Municipal Code 1995, Sections 2.04.080, 2.04.090, 2.04.120, and 2.04.140, and deleting Section 2.04.150, introduced by Brotman on May 13, 2025. Two, Resolution of the, of the Council of the City of Glendale, California Adopting Rules of Order Procedure and Decorum for the Conduct of the City Council Meetings.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Garcia.
Sure. Just to provide some highlight information, again, the, the ordinance at A1 is making those amendments to the municipal code that will incorporate the resolution for the rules of order and allow them to be enforced. And then at A2 is the resolution. These were per what was introduced on May 13th and what further direction was provided by council at that meeting. The only thing I note, I will point out, is it was introduced, and then the ordinance, the resolution was directed to be, to include a revision to the general oral communications, which would now be calling the second period of oral communications, and limiting that to three minutes. I know there was some discussion and, and council wanted to have an additional discussion about that, or some council members wanted to have an additional discussion about that. So I put that before you and take further direction.
Okay, thank you. Let's hear the speakers first, and then we'll discuss the issues.
Our first public speaker is Beth Brooks. You have three minutes.
I'm afraid I didn't look at the full ordinance, but I do think that if you don't include Zoom meetings, it's a real missed opportunity. As you saw from the poll of residents, very few people show up. I think, you know, not many more even watch the meetings. I think that you could increase, and a lot of, there were a lot of, I don't know, I, I don't know anything about it. You would really increase public knowledge and public participation if you had Zoom meetings. I know I did mention it at a previous city council meeting that Pasadena, Oakland, Rancho Palos Verdes, Malibu, Fairfield, Claremont, Bishop, Whittier, and Fullerton all hold Zoom meetings during the city, you know, all have city council meetings that. are available on Zoom. So I think that this is a real missed opportunity if you don't include that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mike Mohill. You have three minutes.
My name is Mike Mohill. I'm just looking at, it says adoption of rules pertaining to council meeting procedures and decorum continue, okay? Why, where's the word council members decorum? We've had some council member, like Mr. Brotman, eat chips while he's here. Some of you go to the bathroom while speakers. You council people, some of you are very rude to the public, very, very rude. Let's have it, okay? We don't need a rule of conduct outside how we should behave the public in this room. You know, before the Ellen Asatran was, became the mayor, we never had any rules out there. People can know how to behave. We're not children. You may think we are, but you make us act like children by the way you speak to us. It's a two-way street, okay? I'm going to bring up the camera again. I hope we're going to bring up the camera tonight. You know, the camera makes me very upset because it was never discussed at council. It was done basically behind closed doors when you all got together at a hotel and say, hey, we're going to change the camera. There was no public discussion. You know, this is, this is the people's house, not your house. When you decide to move the camera so the public today sees the back of my head and not my face, that's very, very rude. And you talk about decorum, et cetera. We should start with the, where the camera is. I have a pretty face, and I want everybody to see it. But you know what? I can't show it because there's no camera on my face. You all know I'm very handsome. I tell you that every week, but the public doesn't know. We need to bring that camera to the face of the public speakers, not just to the guests. When the children were here from the Cub Scouts, you had the camera on their faces so we know who they were. It wasn't that nice. But the public, the people who pay the taxes in this city, you, we get the head. Let's discuss this openly about this camera. It's terrible. I want to see my, not only my pretty face, but everybody else's. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Alan Dish. You have three minutes.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Alan Dish. I want to continue where I left off about this discussion last two weeks ago, I think, yes. Yes, first point, I'm not surprised that, because our democracy is becoming more and more ineffective, that we need some kind of more authoritarian approach, like limit certain democratic, like in China and elsewhere, you know, it's more efficient how they do it, not, not because it's corrupt, but it's just becoming more and more inefficient. Of course, I sympathize with community members who want to see themselves like the camera, even I consider it a kind of privatization of public space, you know. I won't go into that direction, but I will say something now personally that I am like almost disgusted seeing myself on screen, you know. For me to really speak freely, I have to forget about myself, so I have no problem with the fact that the camera is not on us. If anything, I'm more concerned about you up there, you know, all the time you're being observed and so on. Like, it adds more pressure on you maybe, but to continue, I, I attended South Pasadena's Environmental Commission last week as a self-appointed delegate from Glendale, if I may put it that way, and I was quite saddened to see that they are also trying to limit the tree, tree protection measures, you know, because they say it's too much. People come and all the time they're like trying to have all those appeals, you know. So where are we today? That democracy more and more, not that it's under threat, but it's perceived as the threat in its short-term populist form. Mister, now I go to Mr. City Attorney Honorable, Mr. Garcia. You said that wonderfully, and Mr. Garpetian, that this idea of we have to stay on topic, you know, it's more of an art versus a science. I totally agree, because more and more our societies are becoming interconnected, like something happens across the world, it affects us. How to deal with all of that? The good news, I will say this, that divisiveness, far from it being something new that popped up, no. If anything, divisiveness is the default in American politics. I will give you this example. Nick Bryant, who is a BBC correspondent from Australia, who he wrote this book, The Forever War, America's Unending Conflict With Itself. So you see that there's nothing necessarily new going on in Glendale. If anything, the roosters, as it were, have come home to roost. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all.
That's all we have. Okay, Mr. Garcia, so remind us that the only unresolved issue was the five-minute or three-minute time period at the end of the meeting for oral.
From, from my recollection, yes.
We were pretty much on the same page with most of the items in the report.
Or at least willing to move forward. I think there may have been some disagreement on some of the other points, but I think that was the one topic that came up near the end of the discussion about continuing that part of it.
Okay. Who would like to make any comments on what we have before us?
I mean, I'm, I support what's in the ordinance. I'm ready to vote for it. No further comments.
Three or five?
Uh, three.
The three.
I think that's what we have in the ordinance currently, right?
That's in the draft resolution as directed by the council, but again, it was.
Yes, let's talk now is the appropriate time.
I think I mentioned this last time this was here. This isn't about cutting people short. I think Councilmember Asatran, when he was mayor, one of my favorite lines he would use is, you know, if the Gettysburg Address can be done in two minutes.
Under three minutes.
Well, it was, you referred to it as two minutes. Anyway, I, I think when oral communication was first adopted, when you look at the history of it, there weren't other ways of communication with your elected officials. There is opportunities for communicating with email. There hasn't been a single time, I can attest at least personally, that a constituent has wanted to meet. I haven't made myself available. And so while coming to city council meetings is yet another opportunity, it's not the only opportunity with how times have evolved, and so for me, it's about being able to say what you need to say and having the opportunity to also say publicly, which grants you that in the three-minute section in the beginning or at the end. I think we're actually allotting more to the public by having that first section allow for more than five speakers, which was a concern of mine, having people wait for a long time till the end of the meeting to be able to speak.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on this? Mr. Garpetian?
Thank you. Well, I, I'm just going to say why I cannot support this, this ordinance. First of all, the angle of the camera, I think it has to be a split screen that shows the speaker as well as the council. I think that's, that's a given. The rules inside, I don't know who reads them. I think we have a set of rules outside. That's, that's more than enough. The five minutes oral communication at the end, not everyone has the same skills of, as President Lincoln to deliver a Gettysburg speech in less than three minutes. Many people, you know, they come here, they're nervous, you know, so they, they want to take their time to speak to council and, and the community. I think the five minutes has to stay. Limiting speech is not a, a good thing to do, and at the end of the day, some of these, these rules are kind of, I said it in the past, kind of childish. They're all adults over here. We had some, some of the members of the community who got out of hand once in a while. It doesn't happen every, every week. We see it every week that they're very cordial, and they come in and say their, their piece and leave. And I don't think adding too many rules is going to help calm things down when it, when it's needed. If anything, I think it's just gonna add fire to the, to add fuel to the fire. So I, I cannot support this ordinance because of the, the angle of the camera, the five-minute rules at the end, five-minute oral communication at the end, and the rules that are all over the place. I don't know who reads it. I don't think anybody reads those rules, but anyways, that's, that's where I am.
So let me ask, what, what would be Councilmember Garpetian's preference for the amount of time for peoples to, people to speak?
Well, the oral communication that we've had for, I don't know how many decades at the end, or when it was only one, it was five minutes, and it was five minutes at the end of the, the meeting. Now we're cutting it down to three minutes. If you have four people or five people speaking, it's 10 minutes difference for our meetings. I don't, I don't see the, and not everyone takes five minutes to speak. It's just, that's, that's where I am at the, that's one of the issues. The other issue is the, the angle of the camera, the, the split screen is a, is a, I, to me, it's the fair thing to do.
Mr. City Attorney, what is the proposed change regarding the five minutes? Can you clarify that?
Sure.
While on the same page.
Absolutely. Mayor, members of council, so if you recall, the, the rules will now have two periods of oral communications, one at the early, before the agenda items, where individuals can speak for up to three minutes on either agenda items or non-agenda items. And then that three minutes can be reduced if, depending on the number of people who submitted cards for that first period, because it's limited to 30 minutes. Second, then the second period of oral communications, which will be in the same spot on the agenda where our current oral communications is, and again, that'll be the, you can speak on any item, not on the agenda, as long as you didn't speak previously on non-agenda items during that first period, and that will be limited to three minutes, and the number of speakers will be, will not be limited. So it's basically taking that, that our current oral communications, we're making a second oral communications and reducing it from five minutes to three minutes.
And because I wasn't here when the discussion happened between my colleagues, what was the rationale for reducing it to three minutes? Just the amount of time that's spent on?
From what I heard, again, your colleagues constantly speak to as well, streamlining the, the meetings, given the fact that we'll have speakers be able to speak during either report, period of oral communications. We're also keeping the community event announcements, so people want to speak strictly on community event announcements, given the multiple opportunities to speak, as well as to speak on agenda items as they come. I think some of your colleagues felt that, that it was in the interest of streamlining.
I think, I think it's fine to implement most of these changes, but I would urge us to reconsider that five minutes at the end of the meeting rule. I mean, five minutes may seem like a lot. Sure, it is, it can appear tedious, and believe me, I've sat here alongside each of you when the night has dragged on, most of our business is done, and there may be a number of speakers, some of them regular and consistent visitors to council who we appreciate, and we wish that five minutes would go by faster than it sometimes does at the late hour. But I think that for those individuals who sometimes come with, you know, no other place to turn to, and this is the chamber in which they want to express their issue or their grievance, as we've had it, I would urge just to keep it to five minutes. That's not the part of all of this that I feel is the most broken part. I think the current system works fine, so that would be my suggestion. And if we can separate certain things out, I'd be happy to vote for some of it and not support others.
I, I share some of the concerns that my colleagues put forth. Number one is the wide angle of the camera. I, I would like to see a split screen. I understand, though, our rules of reconsideration and rescission would not permit me to be a maker of that motion, nor, nor Mr. Garpetian to be a maker. So we're, we're stuck with the current angle unless there's a change of heart. I'm okay with the five minutes at the end. I mean, sometimes it does get tedious. I do believe if a speaker knows that he has, he or she has three minutes rather than five, I think they would tighten up their remarks in terms of editing them, but, but the good point is that, that's a good point. Some aren't as eloquent as Abraham Lincoln. What did you say? Something like that. It was a good point. I mean, there are those who are nervous, who aren't able to edit, and for that, for that reason, I would prefer to default to the, the five minutes for the end of oral communications, the, the second part of oral communication. Other than that, everything else, I think, is, is workable. We can always revisit them if things don't work out the way we hoped them to work out. Would, okay, so Mr. Garcia, let me ask you, would the appropriate method be an amendment to this motion permitting a five-minute second oral communication?
Yes, on item 782, the, the motion should be to amend that resolution to have it be five minutes for the second period of oral communications when, when the time comes to make that motion. 781 is just, again, just the ordinance. It's not changing or implementing the rules. So the, the appropriate amendment would be to 782, the resolution adopting the rules of order, procedure, and decorum.
Okay, then why don't we, let's start with the amendment, I think.
The code amendment, 781?
Seven, well, the amendment for the five minute.
Oh, okay.
Seven, eight.
Seventy-two, okay.
It would be 782. If, if we're not clear, that would be a five-minute latter oral communication period. Is there a motion for that amendment? It's done by motion and then?
Somebody would have to make the motion, the main motion first, and then make a motion to amendment.
Okay. Would someone like to make the main motion as currently presented to us? And then we'll deal with amendments later.
Do you want to say something first?
Well, I'm okay with, you know, if my colleagues want to go with the five minutes over the three, and that's where the majority of votes are landing, I'm fine with that. I can, I, that's the compromise I'm willing to make. I'm not willing to compromise on the split screen, so.
Yeah, so that's, that can't even be raised by, it could only be raised by one of you three. So if that's not being raised, then that's not even in play.
So if there's a consensus on amending it to, to five minutes, somebody could just make the motion of 782?
With that.
With that amendment. I mean, otherwise, yeah, but you'd have to do it one at a time.
Let me, let me just, on, on the way, there's, I think, been, I believe, a lot more said on this camera angle issue than really is needed to be said. If it was up to me, I would keep the whole meeting at a wide angle, no matter who was speaking, whether it was the audience or the council. This idea, we are, you know, the purpose of these meetings is not to conduct a reality show, it's to have a forum for people to come here before this council that has been duly elected, to have themselves heard, to have responses from the staff and council, and for there to be a public record of it that people can then refer to. It's not for people to psychoanalyze people's posture, their, you know, facial expressions, whatever else may be the case. It's very basic how a meeting has to be conducted, how the record is kept, and if it was up to me, and I think it would make the life of staff a lot easier, is, is the camera angle is on me, you can pull out right now, and anytime the camera is on me, keep me at the wide angle so everyone sees everyone on the dais. I don't particularly care for my close-ups, and I think that would make life simpler for everyone. But again, I don't want to change that camera angle. I don't want to particularly belabor the point. If anyone needs to make the motion, I'm happy to make the motion to move forward and then make an amendment to the motion to keep the oral communications at five minutes.
Well, if we all agree. Well, if we all agree that we should vote on it with a five-minute section, then someone can make the motion and just reference a five-minute period for second part of oral communications.
Mr. Mayor.
And that would be the, Mr. Brotman.
Yeah. I mean, I prefer the three minutes. I think anybody who has something to say can say it in three minutes. I've been on that side many times, and it can be done. And if you're given five minutes, oftentimes, you kind of end up rambling on. However, if there's strong feelings on that, and that's going to make the difference for some of my colleagues to support this or not, I'll give on that, and I'll go with the five minutes.
Well, you are quite eloquent, Mr. Brotman. I mean, you can do, I'm serious. I mean, in three minutes, it maybe takes others eight minutes to say what you can say in three minutes. And not, not everyone has that skill. But I appreciate that compromise offer. So will someone make the motion with the five-minute modification?
Sure. I'll make the motion with the five-minute modification.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Take roll call.
Councilmembers, as other young.
For the entire ordinance?
Entire ordinance.
Well, this will be for seven, we have to do them separately. So let's do seven, eight, two, which is where the five-minute, where the rule is set forth. So, yeah, if we could treat it as the motion on seven, eight, two.
Camera angle stays the way it is.
Correct.
Okay, so are we voting for the entire thing, or only for the five-minute?
This is the entire procedure.
Okay.
Councilmembers, as other young.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
No.
Kazakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. And is there a motion for seven, eight, one?
I'll move seven, eight, one. That's the ordinance.
Correct.
I'll move seven, eight, one.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, as other young.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Oh.
Kazakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Thank you. Seven, B.
Seven?
Did I say, I'm sorry, will we get a condensed version of the new rule, so we all have that?
Because the ordinance doesn't take effect for 30 days, we'll have some time to work with the clerk's office on the agenda, but we'll also put together a little cheat sheet for the council.
I would, yeah, a cheat sheet. I didn't want to call it a cheat sheet, but that's what we'll ask.
Not in legalese.
That's why I use the word cheat sheet.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item.
Next is item B, Glendale Water and Power, Regarding Glendale Water and Power Electric Revenue Bonds 2025 Series, Adoption of Ordinance and Authorizing Issuance of Bonds, and Adoption of Resolution Authorizing the Invitation of Bids and Various Actions Relating to the Issuance of the Bonds. One, Ordinance Authorizing the Issuance by the City of Not to Exceed $230 Million, Aggregate Principal Amount of the City of Glendale Electric Revenue Bonds 2025 Series, Payable Out of the Electric Works Revenue Fund, and Approving Certain Other Actions in Connection Therewith. Two, Resolution Authorizing the Invitation of Bids for the Purchase of Electric Revenue Bonds 2025 Series, Approving a Notice of Intention to Sell Bonds, a Preliminary Official Statement, a Notice Inviting Bids and Official Bid Form, Authorizing the Publication of a Notice of Intention to Sell Bonds, Authorizing the Execution and Delivery of a Final Official Statement, the eleventh, Supplement to the Indenture of Trust, Continuing Disclosure Agreement, and Authorizing the Award of Bonds.
Thank you. And before we begin, I would just like to state that I am going to permit a little bit of extra time to Mr. Garpetian, because we, he, he did not, I don't know how, we were at 10 minutes, I think. I think you had spoken close to 10.
On this?
And, and Mr. Garpetian stopped at five, and I told him he could reclaim some of that time. So don't give me dirty looks if I let him go longer than typically. But just so you know, and he may be, he may be more Abraham Lincoln-ish than we expect. But Mr. Golanyan, please.
Yes, Mayor Najarian, Member City Council. Staff made a presentation previously when council introduced this ordinance. This is essentially the third tranche of the Electric Revenue Bonds 2025 Series. The ordinance attached for authorization to issue the bonds, as well as a resolution inviting bids for the purchase of these revenue bonds. If you have any questions, staff from GWP are available.
Let me recognize Councilmember Garpetian. Unless, yeah, in any way, whether it's questioning or statements.
No, no, I tried to be brief. Well, I, this is a bond for $230,000, not to exceed $230,000 for the Grayson Power Plant.
$230 million, sir.
Million, I'm sorry. I knew that. I was just testing you, sir. Mr. Golanyan. So I, I just want to explain why I'm not in favor of issuing this bond, because I was against it when it was brought up here a year and a half ago, some, some that range. And I was against the way this project was changed and approved. And two weeks, two weeks ago, one of my colleagues mentioned that in 2019, August of 2019, there was a council meeting, and I was part of that meeting, and I approved this project the way it is. I just want to point out a few facts, and I don't want to have too many back efforts on this. It's water under bridge. It's gone, and the project is approved. If my colleagues would like to have a discussion, I don't know, have a study session or special session to discuss it, I'm willing to do that as well. But in 2019, there was no project approval. It was a limited notice to proceed. It was not approving a project. And it had different items in there, as far as the number of engines for the, for the power plant, the DER, the IRP, what other sources do we have? They, they put a big package together and told us, this is what this project may look like. And there was a 14 percent, my, one of my biggest problems with today's Grayson is the cap of 14 percent of our ability to generate power. We capped ourselves, basically. And it was mentioned that that cap was there at that time, which is not true. That was never discussed. The IRP of 50 megawatt was mentioned, which was 14 percent of our total peak load need, which is 350 megawatt. And 14 percent of 350 megawatt is 50 megawatt. We discussed it. And there was a slide that showed if we use 14 percent, if we generate 14 percent power, how much gas, natural gas, we're going to use? And if we run the machine 100 percent, the engines, how much gas we're going to use? It was, it was for modeling purposes. There was never a motion or idea to cap this project to 14 percent. We went from five engines, which would have generated 93 megawatt, to three engines, and it is capped. And at that time, when they went to three engines, this council, some of the council members were asked maybe to increase that 14 percent cap to 25 percent, so we can generate more power and hopefully sell it in the open market. The answer was absolutely not. The bondable portion of this project was $291 million at that time, which is $500 million today. There was no discussion at that time about increasing rates. I'm just pointing out these facts one at a time. So it was not this project, and what was discussed is way different than what was approved in 2022, which I wasn't here at that time. So we were going to bond, issue $291 million in bonds instead of $500 million. And the goal was to generate power and sell it in open market to offset the cost of these bonds. So we were, there was not, never a discussion of increasing rates, especially not by 53 percent cumulative in three, four years. Of course, we're going to discuss that tonight, that last 11 percent, we're going to do it maybe in two or three years, which is, which is a good thing. Also, part of that project was the DER, which was Sanram Project, that that has gone away. So we lost that portion that would have generated, I believe, 25 to 30 megawatt. So we lost that. We reduced our power from 93 to 55 megawatt. And we capped ourselves 14 percent generation to 14, up to 14 percent generation. And this is why I always had issues with it. And we said, no, we cannot generate power and sell it in open market. That is a big problem. And one important issue is that at that time, there was no discussion about the building electrification. Now, we are talking about, not me, of course, talking about the building electrification. So we're trying to have all the new projects to be electrified. Of course, that's put on the back burner, but now we're, is a discussion of all the existing appliances and furnaces. If you want to change your furnace, if it goes bad, you cannot use gas furnace. You have to use electric one. So if you consider the building electrification and try to make it part of this project, you are short heavily on power that you can generate. In 2019, there was no discussion about building electrification. It was nowhere to be seen at that time. We spoke about fleet electrification. We considered a portion of that, because we weren't going to do all of our fleets at, you know, in a short period of time. But building electrification, so if you add all of this on top of each other, the 14 percent cap, going from 93 megawatt to 55 megawatt, the bonds being 291 million instead of 500 million, the building electrification, the ability to generate power and selling the open market is taken away, and the rates are increased by 53 percent. This is why I cannot support, support this item tonight. And again, I appreciate my colleagues' concerns. And if they want to have a private discussion with me, I'm open to it. If you want to have a public discussion and a special session as well, I'm open to it. This, this thing cannot be pinned on me, basically. This, 2019 was limited notice to perform. It was not a project approval at all. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a question and not get too far into this, although it's not directly on the bonds. But regarding the 14 percent limit, if, if the City of Los Angeles had a crisis, and they asked us to provide some electricity from our, from Grayson that would exceed 14 percent, are we permitted to do that? Mr. Mellon?
Scott Nolan, acting general manager at Glendale Water and Power. It's a very interesting question. There's quite a few things that would have to happen to get to the level where LA is a balancing authority, would have a failure and require electric, electric support from us. Under that criteria, the, it would be an emergency event, and we would be directed to provide. So we would have to provide, and we would have to solve the problems of emissions after the fact.
I see. How about, how about locally? Let's say we had a transmission issue, and we had to exceed 14 percent to prevent blackouts or brownouts locally. Would that also be an emergency event that would be dealt with later on the emissions side, or?
It would be a little different for us, not being a balancing authority. We would still have limits. We would seek to get energy from LA if we could, or seek to get energy from Burbank, because we have interconnections with both of them. Assuming that we couldn't do either, we would have to consider shedding load and/or putting ourselves in a violation. So the, that consideration of going into violation would be, it would be heavy.
I mean, these are extreme scenarios.
Right.
Dooms, I don't want to say doomsday, but very rare occurrences. Who, by the way, who would make that decision? Shedding load or increasing the output? Is that you or city manager, emergency meeting of council?
That's me. Ultimately, it would come down to me.
I see. Okay.
Our Energy Control Center has the authority to shed load to maintain system stability. That authority comes directly through me.
Okay. So these are extremely remote possibilities, but I just was wondering.
Correct.
Mr. Brotman, I think I piqued your interest.
Yeah, because I think there's perhaps a misunderstanding. There's nothing that limits us to 14 percent at one time. We can run all three engines 100 percent. I just hope people understand that. So when there's a peak event, when there's a demand, we're going to run all those engines 100 percent. The 14 percent is over the year, you see?
Yes.
And because of the way these engines are designed for peaking, that's why in the 29 IRP, it explained very clearly that the capacity factor that's modeled is 14 percent. That's over the year. Okay? So if you're modeling out a capacity factor, meaning over the year, you're going to use 14 percent of this, you would not want to permit more than 14 percent, because you're paying for that additional increment, right? And that's why we're permitting it at 14 percent. Now, there may be other scenarios that, you know, Mr. Mellon and I talked about this the other day, and there may be scenarios where we want to increase that 14 percent. But I just want people to understand, it's not about a very hot afternoon, and everybody's running out of power, and we can only run these at 14 percent. Okay?
All right. Now, you have full capacity on all the engines, up to 14 percent for annual usage on each engine.
So let me go the other way. Let's say things are really good, that we've got a great supply of renewable energy. We haven't had to run these engines at all. It's getting to be the year-end. Are we able to run them and sell that electricity up to the 14 percent limit that we're permitted for annually? Anyway, these are, this has nothing to do with the bonds, but it's, it's something that, you know, it's a scenario that pops up. Mr. Garpetian?
Can you tell us, I know it may be a difficult answer, but can you tell us, what is the difference of obtaining 14 percent capacity to 100 percent capacity? The permit-wise, what's the difference in price?
It usually comes down to emissions. So the air, airport, the Air Resource Board and the air permit that they provide to us specifies a limited amount of emissions, both in NOx and carbon, that, first off, is going to be based on what we previously had at that site, which was obviously going to be much higher than what we are currently running. And then, second, what our goals are for meeting any internal requirements. So the limitations that we have are going to be based on how the Air Resource Board views our need, is what it comes down to.
Let me, let me just say this. If you have two, three months of hot summer months, and you use that 14 percent, 80 percent of that 14 percent, then for the rest of the year, you have very little left on your permit to run these engines. And the emergency is not only on hot days. Plus, why would you buy something that you can use 100 percent of the time and get 14 percent permit for it, when you can obtain 100 percent capacity permit and use it 10 percent if you want to, if you needed to? You, when you limit this to 14 percent, you shoot yourself on the foot, because when you need it, really need it, and you pass that 14 percent capacity, you cannot use it unless you pay a hefty fund, right? And that is, that is a major problem. And when you go from five engines to three engines, then, then you make 14 percent, that 55 megawatt becomes what? Less than eight megawatt? It's, it's, that's, that's the problem that I have. You purchased it, it's like if you go buy a car, and then you can only use it, I don't know, 14 percent of the time in one year. You can't use it anymore. You just park it in your garage. If you needed it, you could use it. But now, you can't. If you use it in two, three months, four months, then rest of the year, you cannot pass that emission limit. So that, that is a problem. I know this is an issue that we can go back and forth. And it's complicated. We're trying to, I think myself and Councilman Brotman, we're trying to put this in, you know, in a small, small paragraph and tell, tell people what's going on, or try to simply explain it. But why would you limit yourself when you can have 100 percent whenever you need it? If you don't use it, you don't use it. You use it as, as much as you need it. But when you need it and you can't use it, that's a problem. And you're paying $700 million for it. I mean, it's just, that's all I have.
Okay. So, so before us, by the way, are there any public cards out?
There are none.
Okay. So we're at seven, B, one and two, the ordinance and the resolution. Is there, I'm sorry, we have a, let's double check to see if we have cards? And?
Mr. Moye, we don't have a seven, B card.
Thing is, no. Thing is, no. Okay. Therefore, Mr. Brothman?
I'll move 7B, one and two. I can do them together? One is an ordinance, the other is a resolution? Okay, so I'll move 7B, one.
Is there a second?
One second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Rossidarian?
No.
Brothman?
Yes.
Carpettian?
No.
Kassakian?
Yes.
And Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
How about 7B, two?
I'll move 7B, two.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Councilman Rossidarian?
No.
Brothman?
Yes.
Carpettian?
No.
Kassakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Okay, next item.
Next item is aid A, action items. Police Department regarding review of competitive process for official police tow services and recommendations for selection of most qualified proposers. Want a resolution awarding contract to the most qualified proposers and authorize the city manager or his designate to enter into agreements with them.
Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Najarian, member of city council. The city's current contracts for official police tow services expire July 31st. In anticipation of this date, on February 18, this council adopted a resolution, authorized the issuance of a, an RFP for two instead of the previous three districts that contain the full criteria for the services the city was soliciting, evaluating the proposals and the process for selecting the most qualified proposers. With that, I'll turn it over to Captain Alex Krikorian to present this item for your consideration.
Aye, Captain. Hello, good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Alex Krikorian and I oversee the specialized services division. And I'm here to present the results and recommendations of our recently completed RFP process for official police tow services. The purpose of this is to provide the public and the police department with prompt, safe and reliable and responsive vehicle towing and storage services through contracting with private sector tow companies. Our current contract is set to expire at the end of July 2025, which is next month. We presented a tow RFP in July of 2024 in anticipation of the end of the contract. We presented it to council. There were some recommendations. We went back to the drawing board and we re-presented the revised RFP and had it approved in February of 2025. So we opened it up. The proposal evaluation, we received proposals from four companies. Five-member review committee evaluated them across six weighted criteria based on a rating instrument put together by the committee and advice of council with a maximum score of 100 points. The review process was thorough, including onsite inspections, interviews and a review of references, business practices and community perceptions. These are the criteria right here. Qualified, excuse me, qualifications of personal management, service requirements, facility and equipment requirements, prior experience, references and financial viability. Based on the combination of operational readiness, professionalism and alignment with our service needs, myself, by the chief of police, is offering you our recommendation through this objective, consistent and competitive process as District One, Gay's Automotive and Towing and District Two, Mid Valley Towing. The services described in this RFP and the contract are for a period of three, excuse me, five years with an option to renew two times for a period of two years each. And that is it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
Mayor, I do have four cards, but no callers.
Okay, let's hear the speakers.
Alfred Stepanian? Alfred?
Can you go check outside? Alfred Stepanian?
Mayor, we'll go with Mark Hassan.
Mark, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council members and city staff. My name is Mark Hassan. I'm the owner of Crescenta Valley Tow. I've personally worked in the towing industry for 25-plus years and our company has proudly served the Glendale Police Department for more than 25 years. I'm here today regarding item 8A and I respectfully ask the city council to pull this item from the agenda for further review and discussion. As an established business and a longstanding service relationship with Glendale PD, I was surprised to see how our proposal was scored, especially in the areas where we have extensive verifiable experience. We are not new to the city and our record of performance is clear. For example, on the scoring, we are a preferred auto club provider in the city of Glendale, which requires us to conduct certified annual training for all employees. Yet, in the qualifications of personnel management, we received the lowest score. In the item for service requirements category, we were again scored at the bottom despite the fact that we have provided consistent incident-free towing service for over decades. As far as our fleet, our fleet is fully owned, regularly, regularly upgraded and kept in excellent condition. We maintain eight law enforcement-ready units and we are financially stable, fully capable of making equipment investments and the city needs to expand. As far as prior experience, we served the Glendale PD for 20, 20, 25-plus years. We are simply asking for our history, capabilities and readiness to accurately reflect and fairly evaluate it. The process affects real businesses and people who have invested in decades in supporting public safety in Glendale. Finally, I'd like to raise the idea of reinstating zone-based rotation system. While we understand concerns about call volume, a revised rotation model adjusts for equity and allow the city to retain high-quality local vendors like us to ensure timely accountable service across all areas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Louis Reyes. Mr. Louis, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, good evening. My name's Louis Reyes. I'm representing Crescenta Valley Tow. And it's based in La Crescenta with 63 years, three years and more than 25 years of the contract with the police department. Crescenta Valley Tow has longstanding built on trust, professionalism and results. We handle thousands of police impounds, evidence toes and accident recoveries without service disruption or contract violation. We understand the city is considering changing towing structure and we respectfully ask to take a closer look to Crescenta Valley Tow's qualification and record. We operate a fully secure 25,000 square foot storage facilities just minutes from Glendale. It is fans paved, monitored 24/7, compliant with vehicle code and zoning requirements. Our public release office is ADA accessible and we have experience handling lien sales, evidence vehicles and public agency protocols with care and compliance. We appreciate the city's efforts to conducting a fair and competitive RFP. However, we do believe our proposal grounded in decades of experience and proven record deserves reconsideration. We're not asking for special treatment only to view our history, capacity and readiness for fully recognize this process. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I do believe the next name is Sassoon Hagopian? Did I pronounce that correctly? Did I pronounce that correctly? Sassoon? You have three minutes, Sassoon.
Yeah, thank you. Honorable mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Sassoon Hagopian and I am proud resident of Glendale and an employee of Crescenta Valley Tow. I lived in Glendale for many years and I care deeply about this city because it's not just where I live, it's where I serve. When I respond to call from Glendale Police, I take pride in helping my neighbors, my community and sometimes even people I know respond personally. That's made work, making jobs different. It's not just work, it's a responsibility. Crescenta Valley Tow has been part of Glendale's public safety response for over 25 years. We are not outsiders. We are people from this city, working for this city. I know the streets, I know the neighborhoods and I, when I got the call, I responded fast because it's my home. I hope you consider not only the company I work for, but the people behind it. People like me who are proud to represent Glendale every day in the job. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm going to try to call the first person who gave us the card. His name is either Alfred Stepanian or Arthur Stepanian? Arthur Stepanian? That's all.
Okay, Captain. So I was looking at the scoring and CV is 30 points lower than, than the other scorers and their representations are that they, in terms of training, business plan, customer service, some of those other things, that they were at least equal to some of the others. So can you, can you briefly address the, the issues that led them to be scored as, as they did?
Yes, so, excuse me. So the committee did review their proposals. There were some missing factors within the proposal itself. Looking at the interview, there were certain portions that were omitted during the interview that was knowledge to the police department, but were omitted during the interview. The service that we've had with them has declined over the years that we've had this last contract with them with, over the past nine years. We also looked at reviews online and complaints from the public with the storages and impounds that we've had over the last nine years.
So when you say the service, you mean the quality of service has declined, not the, not the number of services?
Correct. The number of services has remained the same over the, or consistently over the last nine years, but the level of service, correct? And the service delivery?
Okay, about five years ago, when we, you know, I've been through this for quite a long time. One of the main issues was the equalization. We had three districts and we were trying to equalize a, trying to make it somewhat equal in terms of the number of cars that each operator was servicing or towing. And I guess upon review, it was the decision to go to two and that's what the RFP reflected. You did, you did your scoring. Okay. Councilmember Rossidarian?
The prior experience, they got 11 points. Whereas the others got 15. Can you speak to that?
Yes, it's their experience. It's not just their experience in the tow field, so they've been doing it for a number of years. And I, I would add that the company did meet the minimum qualifications of the RFP. They just didn't score as highly as, excuse me, as the other companies did. As far as the prior experience, it's also our prior experience with the service that they're providing and the complaints that we've received from the community.
Can you speak to some of those complaints?
The specific ones? Showing up with the wrong truck, that increases the fees that are going to be charged to the, the public. So if they show up with a bigger truck for a smaller car that's being towed, they can charge more for that. Showing up, not having the experience of how to get into a vehicle that might be locked. Some of the newer vehicles have different technologies to be able to essentially slim jim into the vehicle, their response times.
Are any of the other companies here?
I believe I see Gay's Tow here.
Okay. I have some questions for the company, if I may.
Sure. For Mr. Hassan?
No, for Gay's Towing?
Gay's Towing. Okay, is there anyone from Gay's Towing that wants to step forward and tell us who you are and what your position is? And then there are some questions for you.
Counselor, good evening. Michael Gay, Gay's Towing. I can answer your questions if you like.
So I've been going back and forth with staff quite a bit on this. When the RFP came, there were certain light items that I had requested that be part of the RFP, including ensuring that the locations were open 24/7. So individuals weren't being charged for days. They were able to pick up the car, but you weren't available or the company wouldn't be available. I think as I was going through the report, I was also thinking about affordability. I'm not sure what's out there, but one of my big concerns is say someone's car gets towed and it's not a violation due to something reckless driving and then they pounded the car, but more along the lines of, I don't know, blocked the driveway, parked the car on Brand Boulevard, which would be public property. And then it's after hours, they have to pick it up. So say it's going to end up costing about $1,000 and that person doesn't have the money. Is there any sort of payment plan available for that person?
We, we don't offer any payment plans. The customer is available to get the car 24 hours if they want the car.
And how much would that luxury be at the end? If it was after 6:00 PM?
If the vehicle's not impounded and doesn't require release, then basically it's just the tow and the city fee, which is our, the VTAC fee. So it would be the towing, the city fee, they get the VTAC fee. And then if the car is there, we will charge storage. If they come right away, we don't charge storage.
Okay.
But they are available to get the car 24 hours, you know, any time of the night. So 2:00 in the morning, we'll go and release the car. There is an after hour gate fee if we are closed, so there is a fee.
How much is that fee?
It's a minimal fee, it's like $77. Yeah.
So if someone's not able to pay that amount?
It's the same as they would be paying at the city of Glendale to get the release. There's no payment plan, we don't offer that. It's cash or credit card. We take all, all credit cards, American Express, Discover, Visa.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you. Comments?
Well, the only question I have is, thank you for everyone who's come here. I understand that there may be some issues that, I guess you said, quality of service had decreased with Crescenta Valley Tow, correct?
Correct.
Okay. At any point, what, can you walk me through how our dissatisfaction was communicated with the operators, whether it's Crescenta Valley Tow or any of the other individuals? How do we let them know that, hey? And, and I know that happens. We've had it with a number of third-party contractors in the city. You've heard probably from us, not specifically on towing, but on a number of things. We'll express our concerns that are conveyed to us by residents. On, on this, like, how does it get to a point where an operator just drops? Because like the mayor, I'm looking at that 30% and 30-point drop, pretty significant. Was there just, can you tell us what that conversations have been like and if they took place?
Sure. I, I can say that of the two that were selected, we do contract with them now, the third being CV Tow. Of the three, in the last three years, there's been about a dozen complaints and all of those have come from CV Tow. The way that it's communicated between the police department and CV Tow has been through certified mail. To my understanding, that some of those letters were never responded to. In the past three months or so, there have been some complaints and communication has improved in that regard. But like I said, there's been about 12 over the last three years and it's all been from one tow company.
Well, and also the only reason I'm asking this is also because, and I see the chief would like to chime in as well. You know, you mentioned the online survey responses. I know that probably the police department has a more specific and careful way of evaluating comments and, and messages that are posted. I only, my concern happens to be with those online reviews is that, first of all, I can't imagine that anyone gets their car towed and then leaves a positive review. But for those companies that run an operation that receives a positive review after you've been towed someone's car, kudos to you. kudos to you. So I question some, the methodology of utilizing those online reviews to evaluate whether someone's doing a good job or not. The only other thing I would say is, I trust our police department for understanding what their needs are in terms of this recommendation. My only question is, in terms of geographic proximity, I looked, and I know that these tow companies are distributed pretty evenly geographically. I know where Gay's Towing is, I know where Mid Valley is. But I believe Crescent Valley Towing was the only one that had a facility in the northern part of the city. Are we perhaps adding an additional burden and inconvenience on individuals who are having their vehicles towed from the northern, far north reaches of Glendale to have to go down to the other two locations to retrieve their automobile or vehicle?
So the other two?
Was that taken into consideration?
Yeah, that was certainly taken into consideration. And as part of the decision to go to two districts was looking at the tow volume. And the northern district gets about ten percent. So those people would have to essentially drive down to that southern district to get their vehicles. So it was taken into consideration, because it was a lower volume. We were content with essentially removing that northern district and having them go to the southern district.
Chief?
Mayor, counsel, good evening. If I could add, I think it's an important piece to touch on, to your point, Councilmember Kasakian, that, in short, this doesn't come, as I'll say, as a surprise to C V. And in light of the comments that Captain Corian made, I think it's also important to mention, and this is not to by any means degrade anybody, but just speaking facts, it was about a year ago this time that, in part, due to some of the things that we're talking about here, our contract with them, with C V Tow, had to be temporarily suspended for a handful of months. And they had interaction with our police department, our supervisory staff, up to including legal counsel, about issues that they weren't meeting and falling short of things that were in their contract. So this doesn't come at any surprise. This has been something that we've worked on. But in fairness, they addressed some of the things at that time. They were reinstated, and we went back to doing business with them. But again, I want to be clear on the fact that this isn't just something that came out of left field, if you will, and a thirty-point drop. There was some evolution to all of this. And an evolution that I think is fair to say that they were aware of, hence the suspension that they had about a year ago. Also worth mentioning that during that time, Mid Valley helped pick up the slack when we were essentially operating with two tow companies, and they were dealing with that north then.
So is that how that works currently? Where if there's an immediate need for towing service, and an operator in a certain zone is unavailable to provide that service, how do you backfill that currently?
And I can let Captain Corian speak in more depth to it, but essentially, it's exactly that way. We would lean on one of our other ones. But there is an expectation that the tow company that's responsible for respective district, that they are going to be able to handle that workload. Staff accordingly have trucks and staff available to be able to take on that workload. But in the instance where somebody gets suspended or some exigent circumstance, we would lean on the other, one of the other tow companies. Anything to add to that?
No, that, that's it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Garbich?
Yeah. How long does it take for this process to take place? Is it interviewing everyone, site visit, equipment inspection, or what have you? How long does it take in general?
The individual interview or the whole process?
The whole process, the whole process. With three or four, we had four applicants. How long did it take for us to?
Councilmember Garbichian, so according to the report, the RFP was issued in February.
Right.
So that's February till June, four months to get us here.
Four months from issuing the RFP. But, so the interviews and everything, because it takes time for them to submit the application, I just wanted to know on the processes. Let's say three months, it took like three months for the police department to interview, site visit, equipment inspection, or what have you, and check into their records, right?
Correct.
Okay. Look, I, just full disclosure, I used Crescent Valley Tow. Not, personally, I called AAA, and Crescent Valley showed up. They did a good job. I don't know about their facilities. My car hasn't been towed to their facility, so I didn't go pick up the car from there. When you have old cars, they break down. So I used their services three or four times through AAA. Every time I called, AAA came. And every time I called AAA, Crescent Valley came. And their service was good. And gentleman who spoke here, what was his name?
Saasun.
Saasun, he was one of them. But it's very difficult for me to sit here and object to the integrity of the process and the work of the police department and the decision that they have made in this. So I don't have any issue with the report and the recommendation.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's any other questions or comments, it might be time. I'm sorry?
I'll make one short comment. It's no secret that I have issues with just the towing industry model, business model. Can't find nice words about it, so I'm gonna keep my comments to... I've been struggling whether or not I support this item. But I have full trust in our police department, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna support it. And my hope is that as we look at future fees that we're implementing as a city, we look for ways to make sure that the prices that are charged to individuals, especially those that are low-income, are taken into consideration, and we develop better programs. And I recognize that I'm trying to fight a bigger beast than the contract we have here. It's just the whole business model. And so I'll leave it at that.
Right. Yeah, Mike, I have a bunch of old cars, too. They break down all the time. Crescent Valley has always done a good service to me. It just hurts to see a longtime member and service provider to be edged out. Maybe edged isn't the word, but to be left out. And, but the bottom line is, with the police review, whose discretion I hold and I regard, I, I'm not sure there's much that we can do. I can't second-guess anything at this point. So is there a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion. And before I do, I first of all want to thank the Gay's Towing for being here. Sometimes we approve these contracts, and the people for whom we're approving it don't necessarily show up. So it's, I'm glad to see you here and answering questions. And it was actually good to see your patriarch at our Memorial Day event at the city as well. I hope Carville's doing well. I think many people in this room know Carville Gay, who started the company. As far as the towing companies, I can say that I can understand frustrations of people. I have had my car towed multiple times, both for mechanical reasons and because, I can tell you, West Hollywood, where my wife today used to live, very strict parking rules. You park in the wrong place, they will tow you before you're back at your car. And that's actually how she knew I liked her, because I kept going back after I had my car towed a couple of times. But I will say, they also provide a service. And recently, when I had a dead battery, I called in a tow truck, came by and was able to jump-start the car, so.
I like that part of it.
Absolutely. I mean, look for every, everything has a silver lining. So I will make the motion, thank you.
I'll second that.
Take roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadriyan?
Yes.
Bratman?
Yes.
Garbichian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Next is Action Item B, Glendale Water and Power, regarding Glendale Water and Power Annual Authority for the purchase or sale of energy commodities and services. One resolution approving renewal of annual authorization for the city manager or general manager of G W P, or they're designated, to enter into contracts for the purchase or sale of energy commodities and services, including the transfer of initiating and cleaning brokers' services, not to exceed five years in duration, and dispensing with competitive bidding.
Mr. Golanyan?
Yes, manager, I'm a member of the city council. This is our annual authorization for G W P to participate in the energy market, to ensure that reliable and cost-effective power is purchased. The price and availability of energy, commodities, and services are in constant fluctuation until approved contracts are in place. That can range in duration from the next hour up to five years in term. Delays in seeking approval can affect misprocurement opportunities, higher energy costs, and increased risk exposure. That pretty much covers the presentation. If you have any questions, Eliana Cardenas or Acting Integrated Resource Planning Administrator is available to respond.
Thank you. Are there any speakers on this item?
There are no speakers on this item.
Are there any questions from council?
On this item?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We'll take roll call.
Councilmembers Asadriyan?
Yes.
Bratman? Garbichian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Councilmember Bratman, just step out. Point to personal privilege. Let's go to the next item, please.
Action Item C, Glendale Water and Power, regarding authorization to defer the electric rate adjustment scheduled for July 1st, 2025, to November 1st, 2025, and to distribute the eleven-point-three-percent-average adjustment over three years. Five percent effective November 1st, 2025, two-point-nine-five-percent effective November 1st, 2026, and two-point-nine-five-percent effective November 1st, 2027. One resolution to defer the July 1st electric rate adjustment to November 1st, and to adjust and redistribute the eleven-point-three-percent-average adjustment as follows. Five percent effective November 1st, 2025, two-point-nine-five-percent effective November 1st, 2026, and two-point-nine-five-percent effective November 1st, 2027, and directing staff to return in advance of November 1st, 2025 with an ordinance with updated rates reflecting the herein authorized rates adjustment and redistribution.
Mr. Golanyan?
Yes, manager, I'm a member of the city council. So in November of 2023, city council approved a five-year electric cost of service analysis, with the final adjustment being effective July 1st of 2025 this year. As you know, and I'm sure you've heard from the community members and residents, and it was also noted in the community satisfaction survey, the rate adjustments to date have had a significant impact on customers' utility bills. And hence, G W P has been making every effort to mitigate the impact of the final rate adjustment. After a careful analysis of cash balances and reserves and projected revenues from non-rate sources, staff recommends deferring the eleven-point-three-percent final rate, spreading it over three years. That's just gist of it. I'll turn it over to Adurnay Sion, our Assistant General Manager of Water and Power Finance, who has a brief presentation with some pictures that will portray those adjustments.
Thank you, Rubik. Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of council. Adurnay Sion, AGM overseeing finance and risk for Glendale Water and Power. Mr. Golanyan did a really good job going through the, what I was gonna cover, so I'll just keep it super brief. But as mentioned, tonight, I'm here to propose a date of deferral of the rate adjustment date from July 1st to November, one of the remaining three fiscal years covered in the COSA, and spreading the eleven-point-three-percent over the three years, with November 1st, 2025 having a five-percent increase, two-point-nine-five-percent increase of November 1st of 2026, and another two-point-nine-five-percent increase in November of 2027. This, the redistribution of the eleven-point-three-percent over the three years versus doing it all in 2025 can be absorbed with non-rate revenues coming in higher than forecasted and what's in the COSA. And as covered, this is still within the COSA period of five years, so we're well within our COSA timeframe. And most importantly, it allows us to maintain our debt coverage ratio required by the bond covenant. At this time, we are just proposing system average numbers, because our cost, our COSA consultant is working on compiling their rates by class, customer class. So we will be back before November 1st with the class, the customer class rates and the adjustments needed by class. But for now, because it was just not feasible to have it done by July 1st, we are looking at the system average of eleven-point-three being distributed to five, two-point-nine-five, and two-point-nine-five, respectively. That just concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
We have a speaker? Let's hear from the speaker.
Yes, we have one speaker, Mike Mulhill.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mulhill. Good evening, Glendale residents. My name is Mike Mulhill, and I have a pretty face. The camera, council members, I understand you're not gonna have my pretty face. Is that the latest comment?
Well, this is a specific item, Mr.
About our rates?
Yes.
How did we ever get here in the first place, Mayor Najarian? You know, back in the old days, we never had problems with rates increases and bonds. What changed? You know what changed? We have new council members who all they think about is the Green New Deal. The Green New Deal, and our electric and water rates are going up, up, up. And we need bonds to pay for this Green New Deal. I hope that people in the viewing audience remember that next year, Councilwoman Dan Bratman, who's now looking at me, Councilwoman Ellen Satrion, who just looked at me, and our illegitimate mayor, Arun Najarian, are all up for reelection. Now, he tells you, the mayor, that he's not gonna run for reelection. Let's see if he keeps his word.
Thank you. We do have another speaker?
Yes, we have one more speaker, Alan Dish. You have three minutes.
City council, Mr. Mayor, city council, good evening. I wanted to speak because my father is disappointed about these rate increases. So he said I should get a word or two in, you know. Mr. Mulhill is correct to ask why, why? In the sense of the change, what changed? There's a book, I don't have it with me. It's called Disillusioned, and it talks about the aging of suburbs and how over time, like a hundred years or what now, it looks at like Inglewood, but others around the country, how costs pile up, because you have to, I don't know, replace pipes and so on, all, everything, like trees, my God, are falling. So, incidentally, my family back in the old country of western Armenia was involved with water and so on, distributing water. But I don't know much about that. Wait, we're talking about power, though, yes? Okay, okay, yeah. I was just gonna say that it's sad in the sense of the prices are going up, people are being displaced, and so on. You know, for young people, the new American dream is to find a way to leave, maybe. If not Los Angeles, then the country, and so on, and so on. I had the privilege of traveling around, although, are you aware what happened in Portugal and Spain? Yes. Like, people still are not sure what happened. Investigations are going on. But I read some good analyses of how it's, these interconnectedness, more and more, that is, the interconnectedness of our societies, which may lead to these kinds of mass power outages. Okay, they were enjoying themselves, drinking wine, whatever. Here, I don't know if that's what would happen, but I would say that, like, how should I put it? The, it is an issue, and you're delaying it, which is good, so that maybe in the summertime, we will have some peace and quiet, because people are worried there will be discontent, and so on, and so on. I forgot my train of thought, I'm so sorry. I had one more thing to say, but, but again, my father is disappointed in what's going on. Thank you. my father is disappointed in what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
There are no other speakers on this item.
Okay. Any comments from council? This, you know, this is a smoothening of the otherwise singular rate increase for this particular upcoming month. It, I know, it may, it still hurts. Rate increases always hurt. But this is, I guess, one way of, of smoothing it out, making it hurt a little bit less over a longer period of time. And that's about the only good thing I can say about it at this point. There's not, there's no way to sugarcoat it. Would someone like to make a motion?
Couple of comments, too.
Yes, comments.
Right. I, I want to thank the, the staff and the leadership of GWP for spreading the pain basically in three years instead of this year having 11.3% increase. Again, I cannot support any increase at this time. I was on the other side of this, I was at that podium in November of 2023, opposing those increases. I know it's, it's better in three years instead of one year, but let's face it, it's still going to be 48% increase cumulative instead of 53, which is much better. But I, I cannot support the increase, the rate increases in general, because of the way, I don't want to just go around and repeat what I said like 20 minutes ago, but this is because of the project, the way it's designed and everything. So you have to have all these rate increases to qualify for these bonds, which is $200 million more.
Councilmember Asadrian?
I actually just wanted to know, provided that there may be additional fluctuations in place, why are you setting dates now and not just bringing them? Why can't we just cancel the additional increase?
Mayor Asadrian?
That's scheduled already, and then, you know, as, as we further assess, then decide on these dates.
Mayor Asadrian, it's a great question. The reason we are doing that is because we have to recover the 11.3% in order to meet our bond covenant. So if we don't, we're smoothing it, but we're still recovering the revenue needed, and the difference that we're short, we could absorb because of one-time revenues that came in higher than forecasted. So if we don't put future dates, then we will be in violation of our bond, we won't have the cash on hand, the debt coverage ratio won't be enough to cover our, our bond covenant. This is our best attempt in mitigating the costs to the customer and still staying within our COSA period and our guidelines and our debt coverage ratio needed for bond covenant.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'll, I'll just, I didn't support the COSA. Clearly, I mean, it was clear from the previous item. So I know I saw some surprised faces as I was voting, so sticking to that. Thank you.
The alternative is 11% in July.
Yes, Mayor Najarian, this item, as, as you know, is to request deferral of the adjustment. So if councils desire is to not move forward with this item, that you are correct, it'll go into effect July 1.
Well, I want to provide what little relief we can to the residents at this point. So is there a motion on this?
I'll.
Or any other comments?
Yes, I also want to provide the relief to the extent we can, so I will move the item.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
abstain.
Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
abstain.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is Action Item D, Management Services Regarding Glendale Out Pride in the Park Sponsorship Request Moved by Brotman on May 20, 2025. One motion approving a sponsorship request of up to $5,000 for the Glendale Out Pride in the Park event with Glendale Arts as the fiscal sponsor. Two resolution of appropriation. We do have a number of cards on this item.
Okay, let's take the cards, please.
Our first speaker is Beth Brooks. You have three minutes.
While I'm speaking, I just wanted to show you something that the hate group, Glendale extremists who overlap with Glendale Out, who overlap with actual GUSD parents, actually post things in the community, targeting people like Jordan Henry. I just wanted to show you this because it was down the block here. So I have that. And there is an incredible overlap between all of these groups. You know why I'm here? Because, I mean, you've basically been bullied into spending money for a group that doesn't need it. They bought a billboard on Brand in Colorado, which apparently, as far as I know, costs at least $2,500. They have on their Pride in the Park Instagram account, "Thank you, community," with a Venmo QR, with a Venmo, you know, QR code for supporting us and, and giving us all the money we need for the, for the, for the event. So the fact that you're still talking about this is because Mr. Brotman ideologically is digging in his heels in the same way that he dug in his heels about the stupid bike lane on Brand that had to be dismantled. He's digging in his heels because it's impractical. We, we, we already had the Housing Authority meeting this afternoon where people were arguing about pennies trying to spare people so they can pay their rent. And you're just throwing money away. Why, the idea that you want to show people support is fine for the five of you or the four of you or the three of you, write them a check. But the fact that you are, he's contorting himself, and this has been on the, the docket, you know, for four weeks, because, so that people shouldn't be called bigots? I have some pisha trying to attack me. You know what pisha means in Yiddish? It means a person of no importance. I have some little pisha who seems to be Shant Jaltarosian, who you gave an award to and sits on a human relations committee, who's already tweeting about me on his Twitter account and who's attacking me, and I'll read it later, the things he said about me. This little man over here, who I have in good authority and investigations, runs the Glendale extremist network that is attacking you and now is attacking me. So there you go. You want to give money to these people? Write them a check. But don't be bullied because you're afraid of being called a bigot and a, I'm not afraid of being called anything, you know, because I know who I am. You don't need to give people money to, to show them value. People should value themselves. We have a budget crisis. This is ridiculous. This is symbolic of you giving money, they don't need this money. Don't let yourselves be bullied into this. This is, this is ridiculous. This is a practical issue. This is a financial issue. It's not ideological. And I would say that about any group. We don't have the money. They have the money, they don't need it.
Thank you.
Next is Ray Shelton. You have three minutes.
Government has no business supporting any particular form of homosexuality, any particular race, religion, or ethnicity. To do so is a violation of the Civil Rights Act. As the last speaker just noted, there is a big overlap with Glendale Out and the Glendale extremist network, of which they also target me. Two of the members of Glendale Out, one of them is Jay, Gray James, was recently arrested for using a hidden camera to film young girls in the bathroom over at the Glendale Mall. I think that person's a good friend of yours, Mr. Brotman. Think you've had your photograph taken with that person. So have you, Ellen? I like the fact that the camera shows your faces because the public can see how rude and obnoxious you are, ignoring the fact that one of your best friends was arrested for using a hidden camera to film young girls. Also, there's another woman who's part of Glendale Out, Emily Rice. She was recently awarded the privilege of being principal for a day at Columbus Elementary. She makes her living drawing, pedophile, Japanese animation. This is a page from one of her books. I'll leave it over here. You can pass it out. This is the least, the least of the most shocking pages. She's also a parent at Benjamin Franklin Elementary School. She posts herself with blue hair and her little rainbow. She does Japanese pedophile animation of young boys fucking each other, Brotman. This is Glendale Out. This is not about gay rights. As a gay man, I fought for gay rights my whole life. We won. There isn't any right that you have that I don't. This is about a group which promotes transgender child mutilation ideology with children. They don't use the gay flag, Brotman. They use the transgender flag. You know the difference. The extremist group is a hate group. I can only hope that the police investigate their threats against people's lives, against my life, against the lives of my family. Or perhaps the Trump Justice Department can come and investigate this body as well as the people who are behind the extremist network who target. They call people's wives. Would you like to have your wife called, Artie, and have people call her a bigot and try to get her fired because she disagreed with the transgender ideology? Would you like that? And yet you want to give money to these people? I'll leave the pornography with your secretary so you can all have a good look at it. Her name is Emily Rice. And I tried to warn you about Gray James.
Your, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
Next speaker is Mike Mulhill.
Keep it down, Mr. Shelton, please.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mulhill. As most of you know who read today's, your Glendale community newsletter, I exposed who this guy, this man Gray James is. But I also found out earlier this evening that he was not arrested by the county, but our own Glendale Police Department. Yes, Glendale, our finest Glendale Police Department arrested Mr. Gray James. The man's transgender. You know, $5,000, we don't have the money. We're in a budget crisis right now. You just got through raising our electric rates, water rates, everything goes up. Pretty soon, the Jewish groups, the Filipinos, Koreans, they're going to ask for $5,000, too. You know, it all started some months ago when Councilwoman El Nasatia wanted $5,000 for, for blacks, black people for, what was it, a, some type of a scholarship. Hey, I need a scholarship, too. I'm going to school tomorrow. Get me a scholarship. You people all are looking foolish. And if you all pass this $5,000, it will be headline news in your Glendale community newsletter. Thank you.
Next.
Oh, but, excuse me, I got another minute here. By the way, since, since I'm not considered important enough to be in the Glendale news press, the CV Weekly, well, we have a bigger readership. Bye.
Next is Edgman Hakopian. Shane Lee, you have three minutes.
Hello, city council. First of all, I'm sorry if to deal with some of these Nazis in here today who don't like this sponsorship request. Normal people think this is a great idea. I'm one of them. I think this would be great. I think it's, I think, I think I spoke about a month ago about the same item. I think it's really important to support gay people, support trans people, support all the people who've been historically repressed. I, I also think this is a very American thing to do. It's part of who we are as a country. It's been a very long struggle, but we have always, the march of progress has always been about being more inclusive. We used to discriminate based on race and gender, and we still do, but we've gotten a lot better. And I think that if you really love this country, if you really want to be an American, you need to outwardly show your support for gay people and for sexual minorities by giving them a small request of $5,000. In the grand scheme of things, it's a really small amount. And I urge you as one fellow American to another to stand up for your values and vote yes on this item. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next is Ellen Dish.
Mr. Mayor, city council, I'm for the event. I will not go into it. I want to sympathize, though, with Mr. Mulhill. I have neither, I have also, I mean, never been quoted, neither in the CV Weekly nor in the Glendale Outlook. And, well, censorship is alive, but, okay. I think, let me look at my notes. Sorry. Do I really have, yes, three minutes? I just want to make an observation already made by Mr. Garpetian, no, last week and so on, that like, why is it that we are able to pass decisions for such large impact items like with power plants and so on? But when it comes to, you know, this is the fourth meeting and so on, that we're discussing, why? And so my observation, very, I think, it might, it might be interesting to you maybe, is that basically, our democracy, again, we are becoming reliant on expert rule when it comes to those decisions. Like, nobody practically commented, there's no point on, you know, those things. But when it comes, so that the only things we can debate on, not the powers, not the tree falling, it's these religious, sexual, and ethnic debates and so on, which, okay, we should do them, but like, you see my point, that it's, it's an issue here. So what, what else? I want to thank the police also, my God, because you remember the summer of 2023, we are still in the after effects of GUSD protests, I claim, but I think the, sorry, no, no, that's my fault, maybe, that was, but.
Your family was in the water business, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My God, my God. Let me just, yeah, yeah. I want to thank the police chief, Mr. Sid, because he approached Mr. Mulhill and I and told both of us to behave ourselves, you know. I like this idea of, so, well, as for, like, what can I say? I mean, I wanted to speak about, again, the left should be politicizing economy as well as identity politics and so on. But we, I don't agree with this deep politicization of economy and so on. As for Armenians and speeding, you know, that's another cultural topic, but I can't go into it. It's not the issue here, you know. Like, all I will tell you is the first Armenian in California owned a bicycle store. So things are very complex here. So I stop, but I would love to provide my research on Armenians and driving and so on and so on. Thank you. Because it's cultural topics and, thank you, yeah.
Thank you. We have one caller, Maro Yakopian. Maro, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Yes, hi. Good evening. Glendale Out is a hate group that's been terrorizing people in this community, and we are standing up against all of them. We have uncovered their identities, and now the tables will be turned. Do not give them a penny. These LGBTQ members thrive on being seen as the victims, but the reality is far from what they are trying to portray. They have been attacking conservative individuals in this city, and we are going to start calling them out and taking legal action. Mr. Shant Jaltarosian, who came to speak tonight and his Glendale Out thugs have been on the forefront of on the forefront of defaming me. Why? Because I had the courage to demand accountability for his disgusting gay and lesbian Armenian society event where the Armenian woman was mocked by a drag queen, disgracing our culture by defiling a sacred gown with a perverted dance. For two years now, they have been attacking me, and their attacks have resulted in the destruction of the free Armenian academy program that I worked so hard to create over the past five years in order to help hundreds of Armenian families around the region. Their sick agenda is now affecting the community at large. They are not victims. Whenever they want to appear like the victim, they will call on their journalist sympathizers to write hit pieces on anyone who demands accountability from them, like they did by calling Lois Beckett at the Guardian newspaper to do a hit piece on me so they could paint themselves as victims in this community. Did I also mention that Glendale Out member Shantjol Tarosian, who spoke tonight, is also on a video wishing there was a vaccine for heterosexuality? This is the group the city is considering giving money to? This is the group you are giving commendations to? Don't be fooled by them. They have an orchestrated campaign of attacking conservative individuals in the city. They have lied. They have defied, defamed me and many others personally, and they have, the damage they have created doesn't quite fit the victim image they are trying so hard to portray. Thank you.
And that is all.
Okay. I'm going to start this off. Would you please pass this down?
Mr. Mayor, I just need to make a disclosure first.
Yes.
I think, I think to start off, Mr. City Attorney, do I need to do this again?
Yeah, just for the record.
Okay, for the record, my partner, Michelle DiNardo, is on the board of Glendale Arts, which is acting as fiscal sponsor for this item.
And that, to our understanding, is a non-compensated officer position.
Yeah, non-compensated volunteer and all the rest of it.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to raise, regarding this issue, I would like to raise two significant concerns. One is regarding process and conflict of interest, and the other is regarding the proposed financial gift to the group called Glendale Out. Now, at our last meeting, I raised the issue of a potential conflict of interest involving a council member's concurrent role, council member's, partner's concurrent role as a director of Glendale Arts. I would like to acknowledge that the city attorney did some additional research and created a memo that we all received, basically indicating that there is no conflict. And while I respect that perspective, I must respectfully disagree. This is called the Guide for Local Agency Counsel Providing Conflict of Interest Advice, and I've handed a copy to each of you. And it discusses when there is a conflict. By the way, this is a handbook that is prepared by some of the top city attorneys throughout the state, through the County Council's Association, through the University of California General Counsel, from staff of the Fair Political Practices Commission. This is not some, something that some attorney has written on the internet or anything in that, in that matter. Now, regarding conflict of interest, this sets out all the rules that we should follow. And the rules that we have passed, the laws that we have passed in California under the government code, are only the minimum standards to which public servants are required to comply. On the other hand, public ethics are a set core of values that are not defined or enforced by law. They are expectations imposed by you, members of the public, that the public servants, that's us, will go above and beyond the requirements of the law, above and beyond the requirements of the law, and act in a manner that is in the best interests of the city and not in the service of narrow personal interests. Now, there's a particular section in this handbook that deals with the question of what happens if someone or someone's spouse is a member of a charitable organization and a contract, in this case, giving money to Glendale Arts as a contract, even though it's being funneled to Glendale Out. The esteemed authors of this book indicate that an official who serves as a non-compensated offer of a charity may wish to seek advice from the Attorney General or the FPPC before participating in the agency's decision to contract with that charity. So this is a warning that's being given by the top legal minds who are advising cities and city attorneys how to deal with conflict issues. I do want to say that Mr. Garcia's memo or opinion is not a get out of jail free card. Isn't that correct, Mr. Garcia? We cannot rely individually on your opinion if called before the FPPC.
Correct. Only the Attorney General, the FPPC can provide legal immunity.
Correct. So these are, these are issues that are being raised. It's a warning that's being raised. Now, in the memo that Mr. Garcia gave us, he said, oh, there are so many examples of opinions of elected officials who have asked for clearance to vote on these type of contracts, so many that the issue is clear. Twenty, I believe, which is a lot. So I argue that these elected officials throughout the state all found it necessary, even though there were opinions before them, to go to the FPPC to get that clearance, to vote on these sort of issues. It has been, furthermore, it has been the policy of this city, whenever faced with a conflict potential, to err on the side of caution. And unfortunately, that's not what we're doing here. To be completely safe, Mr. Brotman should have gone to the FPPC to get a clearance on this and not just relied on Mr. Garcia, because the experts in the field say the person in the same situation that Mr. Brotman is in may want to get a clearance from the Attorney General or the FPPC. This isn't personal. This is about procedural integrity for our city. My second concern is regarding Glendale Out. Deeply troubling to me is that the founder of Glendale Out, I'm not going to put a name out there, but the founder of Glendale Out, who was before us today, was arrested two weeks ago for filming young children, girls, in the restroom of the Glendale Galleria. And this wasn't alleged. This was admitted to in a subsequent video that this person put out. How in the world, with a clear conscience, can we, the city of Glendale, funnel money to an organization led by this person? The violation is California Penal Code 647-J, which prohibits using concealed devices to record or observe individuals in places where privacy is expected. I imagine in this picnic, there are going to be minors. This is deeply troubling to me. Secondly, secondly, the other founder who was here today, I believe it to be someone known on social media as Shant J. Shant J is running the Glendale Extremists Network website that attacks not just me, I can live with it, my other colleagues, and individuals in the community in a vile and disgusting way. In fact, in fact, as we speak, disgusting posts have been put up from what occurred earlier at the start of this meeting. It's on there right now, claiming that I am a bigot and I kicked them out of this room. I think those of you who were here saw exactly what happened. They came up, essentially spit in our faces, or my face, and left the room. How are we going to give funding to this person? This person also, Shant J, has created copycat websites, yes, of Mauro Yakubian, yes, my sister, but stating vile and disgusting things. And yes, has led to the demise of an Armenian academy in Blair High School. And we know that because we've received emails, we've received Public Records Act requests, and believe me, there are some other emails from people in this room who are accomplice to that. So listen, you know, they're probably saying it already, Nazi bigot, I respect the gay and lesbian community. I think that they're being hijacked by a bunch of extremists. I would like nothing more than those people who feel that they have been trod upon, that they have been disregarded, and placed as second-class citizens to have a picnic. I'm fine with that. But there is no way that I think the people of Glendale should give funding to this organization. And that's, you know, it's not hate, but it's just something we can't do, we shouldn't do. We are the stewards of the public trust, and this should not occur. That's, that's my position on this. Mr. Brotman?
How do you really feel about it?
I feel serious about it, Dan. I mean, it's.
Well, let me just say a few things.
It's concerning.
First of all, this is not a gift to Glendale Out. It's not about any one individual or their personal behavior. It's about supporting the only Pride event being scheduled in this city, an event that, if you've been to it before, is inclusive, uplifting, loving, and family-friendly. That's what this is about. Thank you for this, but I think our city attorney's track record is pretty good on some of the things that have come before this council, such as the use of our best interest clause, such as recusal issues on the Verdugo Wash. I think he's been spot on, so I'm comfortable with his advice, and I believe there is no conflict, there is no personal interest whatsoever by my partner and myself. She is a volunteer for this organization, and that is it. Fiscal sponsorship has come up before. It's, it's also, I believe, a non-issue. It's a very common practice. In fact, maybe not well-known, but Catherine Barker funded a scholarship through Glendale Out, using Glendale Arts as a fiscal sponsor. So nothing new. That's all I want to say. I mean, I think if we can spend $40,000 for cruise nights celebrating the classic car community, we can spend $5,000 celebrating the queer community. And that's it.
Thank you.
If there are none, I'll move the item.
We have a motion.
I'll make a comment before. I think you took most of my comments. So, Mayor Najarian, I think you said it well. You don't have an issue with the event. The funding that we're providing is not going to Glendale Out. It's going specifically for this event. It's covering the same event that you said you have no issues with. I don't think it's about an individual. It's about an event. It's about supporting a community that has seen a lot in the last several years. I said this a couple of meetings ago when this item first came up. I think it's the least that we can do for a community that has been going through a lot. And yes, Ms. Brooks, it may be, it's so small that I think it's symbolic, but that symbolism is needed here now. And so I've attended this event. I've said it time and again, you know, it is family-friendly, a bunch of people gathering at a park and having a picnic. And so I will be missing it this year as I will be out of town, but I hope families continue to gather there and celebrate Pride this month, and I obviously support this.
Mr. Kasak.
Well, I think it's very sad to see in our city today that people are more concerned about dividing our city against each other than trying to bring it together. I support events that try to bring common understanding, that bring members of our community together to celebrate themselves, also celebrate the city that they all call home, regardless of where they've come from, who they love, who they associate with, whatever it may be. I'm a firm believer in that right to assembly. And I haven't necessarily seen, I haven't seen issues with this event in the past, so it's unfortunate that it's become such a flashpoint now. I would like to urge individuals who seem to be at odds with each other on this issue to try and find time to talk to one another, figure out what it is about each other that is so troubling, that they choose to litigate their views over social media, sometimes behind anonymity, and in general, just carry themselves in ways that we would not want future generations of Glendaleans to carry themselves. We want to set a better example. I have no problem with a Pride event in the city of Glendale that has been, especially that one that's taken place for a number of years. I am someone that maybe doesn't know everything about the queer community, LGBTQ community, but one thing I've learned is that I gain more from being more curious and judgmental of people, trying to understand where they're coming from, whoever they may be, whatever views they may have. Sometimes it gets me criticized by people who disagree with that viewpoint or who may disagree with the people I decide to speak to when I speak to them, because I want to know more about them and their experiences. And so for that reason, I'm fine with this event taking place, sponsored by Glendale Arts, and if the motion hasn't had a second yet, I'd be happy to second it.
Any other comments? Mr. Garcia?
Just wanted to note that if this motion passes, that Councilman Brotman's interest vis-à-vis Glendale Arts be noted in the minutes for this item for purposes of the 1091.5A8 exception.
When we first put this on the agenda, that was not noted, though.
It wasn't. However, unlike 1091.5A7, which requires it to be noted at the beginning of the discussion, A8 doesn't have a similar requirement.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. And just to be clear, I'd like to restate the motion. The motion is approving a sponsorship request for up to $5,000 for the Glendale Out. for up to $5,000 for the Glendale Out Pride in the Park event with Glendale Arts as the fiscal sponsor.
And the resolution appropriation.
And the resolution. Mr. Carpetian?
Yeah, just, just a quick comment. I think this is the fourth time we're discussing this, this item. My position has always been the same. I think this has been politicized for wrong reasons. My position has always been if Glendale Arts is a sponsor, they can apply for discount on rental spaces that we have. They file an application. It's very basic. We, we came up with this idea. They give 50% discount when they apply for it just because they're a nonprofit. They could have done that. And this, this, this created and others like a déjà vu all over again on inappropriate and unnecessary discussions that has nothing to do with the, with the purview of this council. So, my position is the same. I think they can, they can apply for a permit fee reduction, and it will be pretty much the same. I don't know what the exact number is, but that's, that's where I stand, so.
And just since we're putting things on the record, I see this as a personal affront by my colleagues, funding a group that has attacked me personally. Of course, we all get attacked. That's fine. But giving money to a group? You get attacked. Each and every one of us have been attacked, but we're not giving money to those groups. So, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Asadrian?
Yes.
Bratman?
Yes, and we are not giving money to a group. We are giving money for an event. Yes.
Carpetian?
No.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
No.
Next item.
Next is item 12, Discussion of Councilmember Future Agenda Requests. Item A, Councilmember Asadrian's Request to Agenda Is a Report Regarding Contracting Directly with Communications and Outreach Consultants for City Projects in Lieu of Subcontract Agreements with Project Contractors and Consultants.
So, I have raised this several times when we've gone out for RFPs or we've been approving contracts. What I'm looking for is a report from staff that we can discuss to look at how we separate out the communications and community outreach contracts from larger contracts like engineering or whatever else it may be, whether it's GWP and so forth. There's a couple of reasons for that. One is, and you can speak to any communications or PR firm and anybody that's in this field, there's a markup on the communications that we end up paying for when it's bundled with a larger contract. So, the contractor doesn't disclose to the communications or PR firm how much that markup is. We don't know how much that markup is because we never see the subcontractor's proposal. The second part of that is that the contractor or the, the larger entity is the one that is responsible for the communications. And we've time and again seen where we go in for a big project and then not happy with the community outreach and engagement, but really, the contract is not with the city and the accountability is not with the city. It is actually with, with the contractor or the larger contractor that is not in the communications or community outreach. What I'm looking for is a report. I know that some other jurisdictions have other opportunities. I'm not looking for us to continuously also do separate RFPs. I know some jurisdictions, for example, have a process where they put out an RFP for different kinds of communications and outreach. It comes to the elected body. They vote on a group and bundle where then staff is able to select them. And so, I'm looking for an item to come back to this council that kind of outlines some of these concerns that I have when it comes to our communications and community outreach and us being able to create that pool and also have accountability. I think it's a great money-saving measure for the city.
Okay, that's, that's enough, I think.
Okay.
I, I support that, and I will second for it to be brought back. I'm glad someone has brought it up.
If there's no other comment, let's take a roll.
Yeah, no, I don't really. Yeah, I'm, no, I'm happy to have it come back. I mean, if we can get a better deal and get better outcomes, of course. My only question was going to be, is this something the city manager can do? You know, is it something that council has to direct the city manager to do?
I'm, I'm looking for this to be a city policy and for it to be coming back as both a policy but also looking at us creating a pool for communications and outreach depending on tiers, so.
Can I just see if the city manager has any thought one way or the other?
Councilmember Bratman, I do have several thoughts, but the request is direction, or the request is to craft a report to bring back to council for consideration that will list our concerns and list the communication strategy that we currently have in place and pros and cons of this request.
So, we can do all that when it comes back? Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to support it. I think it's going to lead to favoritism, and I think that's a danger for this city at this point. So, you can call the roll.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Bratman?
Yes.
Carpetian?
No.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
No. Next item.
Next is item B, Councilmember Asadrian's Request to Agenda Is a Report Directing Staff to Apply for Grant Funding for a Pilot Program for Utilization of the SafeView Domestic Violence App. We do have several speakers on this item.
Let's hear from the speakers. Do that first.
Do people even know what this is?
Do you want to give a recap as to what it is?
Sure. I actually have like, I think it's a one-minute video just so the public is also aware of what I'm talking about.
Did you know that one in three women worldwide have experienced some form of sexual or physical violence? So, how can you keep yourself and your community safe? With SafeView, a virtual safe space for women, you can protect yourself and your community as well as educate, empower, and prevent future incidents. Let's take a look at how this application works to help you. You need to provide some information to register for the app, but this information is not available to other users. Other users will only see your username. If you find yourself in a dangerous situation, press and hold the help button for three seconds. A free alert SMS with your geolocation will be simultaneously sent to up to seven of your previously chosen contacts. Once you press the help button, SafeView will automatically begin audio recording for one minute. This audio recording can be used as proof of evidence for later prosecution. SafeView is not only an emergency tool, but can also be used in your day-to-day life, specifically through the forums section. Many of us have had the feeling of being alone in our thoughts and questions, but through the forums section of SafeView, you can find discussions and information on all topics. Here you can access a wide community of peers and professional consultants, like lawyers and psychologists, that you can ask advice from for free. With SafeView, women can also access a network of organizations and consultants as well as get advice. One of the other key functions of SafeView is providing you with an up-to-date network section that shows you what kind of organizations and consultants there are in your country and tells you how to contact them digitally and in person. If you are having trouble locating an organization or person to help you, don't worry as SafeView has consolidated all relevant organizations and consultants into one space. SafeView also shows you where to find these people directly on a map. Many people have a hard time understanding what is available to them or what exists. SafeView has made this process of finding what you need simpler and faster by putting it into one easy-to-use space. Find exactly what and who you need with SafeView. SafeView, a virtual safe space for women. Available on iOS and Android.
So, I just, I've been, I've, I've talked about this app before, but I just wanted the public to understand what we're talking about here. Just to keep it short, there is a grant that is available for us to apply to. The award is between $500,000 to $1 million that we can get. While I initially put this item up as just for us to apply to see if we can get SafeView as part of our programming in Glendale, having looked at the proposal and the tiers, I recognize that there's a lot more funding that's available. And so, what I'm looking for here is for us to apply to the grant at the tier two that is part of the proposal. And then whatever is left over for us to incorporate any kind of programming that supports the goals of the CSW and the police department as well as our nonprofits in our city as it relates to domestic violence. There is requirements within the grant that it has to be supporting DV work with PD. And so, the YWCA Glendale would be the co-applicant. And then, as part of the application, we're also able to incorporate other partners that would be willing to take part in this. In speaking to Chief Sid yesterday on this issue, I think one of the things that we really can do and I would love, love for us to explore is how we help provide both training and additional resources to our PD in helping close the gap when they're going out for a domestic violence call and are engaging with victims and how we bring them closer together to the YWCA programs as well as the Armenian Relief Society. I know that Cheryl from our PD has worked on these grants before and has reviewed this grant application and is able to do it. And so, I'm just looking for my colleague's support in us applying for this grant under these, under this direction.
Okay, we have speakers?
Yes.
I'm going to allow one minute per speaker.
One minute?
One minute.
Okay.
60 seconds per speaker.
We can't really time 60 seconds.
We don't, or?
One minute.
I'll time it.
I thought you said one minute and several.
I said one minute.
I misheard you. Okay, one minute. We have Melanie Vartabedian as the first speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, esteemed members of the city council. As the new-ish Director of Social Services for the Armenian Relief Society, I'm honored to be here this evening. The ARS is an organization founded and led by women. Our social services department provides vital services and linkages to communities in need. And our Family and Youth Guidance Center provides lifesaving support to those in crisis. Within weeks of starting my position, I was introduced to an extraordinary person with an extraordinary vision, Mariam Torosian, the founder and CEO of SafeView. Would the ARS be willing to support the launch of an app that can protect victims of domestic violence through real-time reporting to the user's friends and local authorities? Would we be willing to support an app that provides community forums and professional advice while securing the anonymity of its user? The long, the short answer to a long-winded question is yes. We also are applying to grants to help fund our work with SafeView, but I think this is a great way for the city council to bypass using city funds, and I really support this grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deborah Sa.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Sa from YWCA of Glendale and Pasadena. We would be one of the co-applicants for this proposal. And the proposal really is an extraordinary opportunity to bring in more resources to the city. And it will allow for us and the Glendale PD to work together more closely. Really, the goal of this proposal or this grant opportunity is to improve relationships between the law enforcement and survivors. So, to the extent that we can do that through training and other capacity, capacity building, we would be really interested in doing that. We have been wanting to do it, but there has been a lot of federal funding reduction, and we will see more state and federal funding reduction going forward. So, we're really excited to bring in more resources to be able to do that. I thought I had three minutes. I'm sorry.
The final actually speaker is Marina Manukian.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian and council members. My name is Marina Manukian, resident of Glendale. I am an attorney by profession, a certified family law specialist practicing in family law. I've been representing domestic violence victims for about 30 years. I'm part of the Armenian Bar Association's Domestic Violence Committee and on the American Bar Association's Commission on Sexual and Domestic Violence. And I'm here to speak in support of this action item because it's a no-brainer. From a cost-benefit analysis, the dedication from the city is to request for a grant to be applied to. And then, the benefit that we might get from this, as a practitioner, I would love to have residents of Glendale have access to an app that records the happening of domestic violence. As an advocate, I would love for the victims to have access to this app to call for first responders or their emergency contact. It's a brilliant app. And one thing that that video didn't show, I was told by Ms. Torosian, that they're working on having photos saved on it stealth-wise. So, that's a good app to have. Thank you.
Okay, does council have any comments?
I have a question. What is the deadline for the grant?
So, it's the 22nd of June. We, in discussion, we, we have the time to be able to do this. I will note that SafeView, YWCA, as well as ARS have also offered to provide assistance. I've done grant writing myself. It doesn't take much to turn it around.
Yeah, my, my question is not, so, like, how does this work? Because this item has to come back to us as a report. I mean, how can we, how can we? I'm just confused about the process.
The only reason that this is coming in front of us, staff could have just applied. The only reason it's coming in front of us is because there is a vendor that we're talking about, which is the SafeView app. And so, for example, if that wasn't part of the conversation, this was, this wouldn't even be on the council agenda. Staff could be able to just apply for it, and then, you know, we accept the funds. That's all.
Staff can't apply for funds without us directing them?
No, they can apply for grants.
Without us directing, without a policy for grant funding?
Mayor Najarian, council members?
Funding, I mean, this is not like UAWC funding where we get it every year or whatever.
Right, we do, staff do on a regular basis, apply for grants. Apply for grants.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
On a regular basis. Some of the grants requirements are that they need the approval of the legislative bodies. Not all of them do. I would say minority of them do. So, for those that have that requirement, we do request council's direction and approval to apply for grants. But for majority of them, no, we don't. The difference here is there is a private entity involved who could potentially benefit financially from applying for this grant. So, that's, that's the part that is different than applying for other grants that we typically do.
And so, I'll just, I'll just note, because I have raised SafeView previously. And so, I'll just note, because I have raised SafeView previously, this isn't...I was looking for ways that I can bring SafeView into our budget conversations. I wanted it to be fiscally responsible and looking at how we were partnering. Those were some of the conversations I've had with YWCA and ARS, if they would be willing to partner. And then this grant opportunity became available through the federal government, and so I thought this was, you know, perfect timing for it.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah, but see, we're getting into a discussion on it, which we...
Wow, a disclosure to make after.
Well, it's because it's different than, you know, if it were simply a report's gonna come back, we could have the discussion when the report comes back. But this is actually like a decision we're making on the spot.
It can't be. No, it cannot be.
The process, Mayor and council members, that we have established in place for these new business agenda items is after deliberation and brief deliberation and discussion is for a report to come back so that you have a better understanding of what entailed...what's entailed in that effort, and then you give us direction.
So...no, so last time I brought this up when I was agendizing it, I said if I raise this, I raised the fact that the deadline was on the 22nd. This is simply for us to apply for a grant. This doesn't require a report. I'm not asking for a budget. I'm not...I'm literally asking my colleagues if we can apply for a grant.
Mr. Garcia.
My understanding was that the report would come back, and that's why we have this process. If the manager had the authority to make this grant or felt like he could do it, he would have done it. I'm not sure what the discussion was relative to what's getting approved, but this is not an action agenda to approve things, so...
It would be, if I may, it would be very similar to us writing a letter of support, which we have done in the past, or us...
My only point to that is, and we've had this discussion in relation to the rules that we just adopted, was there was always some challenges with, you know, writing a letter of support under this item. We specifically amended the rules to say specifically when it's just providing a letter of support or asking our assembly member to support legislation, that could be done under this procedure. But when you're asking for a process to apply for a grant or take some action, the ideal always was to have it come back to a subsequent item. And I know we have an agenda next week, so I wasn't sure if there's a time to do that before the deadline, but I mean, it was our...my understanding at least, that there would be a subsequent report. Otherwise, it doesn't make sense to even put it on this particular part of the agenda.
That's why...
Right. And as the city manager said, it benefits one particular company. It's like a no-bid, sole-source issue, which typically we don't do. Last comments before a disclosure of some sort?
Yeah, I...full disclosure, I met with the young lady, Ms. Tatevossian, and her father. They contacted me. They wanted to present the app and tell me what does this app do. It is a great idea. I'm not against the idea at all, I think, but it was in a development process. I think it's done, but I don't know if it's...I think it's in New Mexico they have a portion of it, or they started a...what do they call it? A trial process. Full disclosure, I met with them. I like the idea, but as far as agendizing it, I'm okay with agendizing it to find out how much grant...have we done this before to apply for a grant for a private entity? Team up with them and...
Councilmember Garpetian, if we have, there's been a process where we have entered into some kind of an agreement with a private entity.
Right, because there are other people who contact...and what I did at that meeting, I directed them. I said, "Go meet with the city attorney, our innovation department, our police department," because I'm not the expert in it. I directed them to the, you know, the right departments to go contact them and see how can we collaborate and work together. There are also other apps, not in this level, that they contacted me, they wanted to do some sort of a...they created an app for our permitting process, basically, to expedite the whole thing. And I did the same thing. I met with them. They told me, "How does it function? How does it work?" I directed them to the CDD and to the city manager and everyone else to...because I'm not the one...I'm not an expert in this field, so I passed them through the right departments. It was a great...and he...she also made me a...what do you call it? A member of that app. So, she tried it. She physically showed me how does it work, and if there's a problem, you press a button, it sends a notice to whoever you have on your app. It's a great idea, so...
Let's limit our discussions.
Can I make a...
Yeah, but briefly, we're going way over here.
I mean, I think it's an interesting app. I mean, there's obvious support from important groups. I'd like to see us be able to do this. I just don't know procedurally how we can. And my question is, yeah, it's a private entity. I guess I don't really understand why that matters. Can the city manager just kind of take this on, you know, without this having to come back as an action item? Because clearly, there isn't enough time. So, is there some way we can make this work? I don't understand how we can.
Councilmember Brotman, I'd love to make it work as the city manager, but again, I don't have direction from council to enter into a contractual agreement with this entity.
If I may, if I may, we're not going into a contract with them. You can list that if you get the funding, you're willing to explore it. There's no funding for it right now. We're not going into a contract. We're not doing any of that. I'm asking for us to apply for a grant for us to be...and to be able to answer your question, this app actually is used all over Europe. The state of New Mexico has actually implemented it.
Doesn't matter.
Can they apply for the grant, and we provide a letter of support?
No, so the grant requirement is that the government entity, which is the city of Glendale, would have to partner with a co-applicant whose work is 45% in DV work, which is the YWCA Glendale. So, I'm just...
Can I just say...
Briefly, briefly, we're blown open, the new rules that we just...
Mayor, I haven't said anything on this item. I just want to say two things. Sure, I get it. Can we just bring this back? How quickly can we bring this back to have it officially agendized? From my understanding, this is for a specific service that we don't seem to be providing to our residents. I think that...I believe staff can come up with language to allow for us to participate in a grant for something that we are not currently providing to the residents and to have this done quickly, whether it's through this company or internally, although I think doing it internally would cost us a lot more to do so if there's an off-the-shelf product. Is that possible to do, Mr. City Manager?
I have another recommendation.
Well, the recommendation, move this forward, is the question.
I'm trying to make it move forward. If this item is...if you need to agendize it for next week, then agendize it for next week with the report and have staff work on it in the meantime if there is support to move forward with applying for a grant.
Kind of busy next week, aren't we, Mr. Kalanya? We may have to push it off another week.
We can't do that.
We can't. We'll miss the deadline, Mayor.
When is the next time you can apply?
There isn't the next time. This is a one-time opportunity. That's coming down from the federal government.
Yeah, anyway, so, I mean, the issue I have on the issue before us is that...
Please state your other issue, Mr. Najarian. Please, if we're gonna do this...
You're out of order. Let me finish, please. Let me finish. No point of privilege, not recognized, not recognized.
You're not recognizing my point of privilege.
You're out of order.
Okay. This is how we're starting this?
You're out of order.
We're starting this.
Is that we're deciding on a vendor and including that information in the grant, committing to that vendor. You want to put this before us? We can't, but let's go through the proper process of what we just voted on in our procedures. So, I don't think today we can say it's gonna be this company, because I don't know much...I've met with them. I don't know much about it. So, if there's a motion, make the motion, and let's see...let's get the votes and put it on. As stated before us...
Put it on where and when?
Agendize a report directing staff to apply.
And that report's coming back next week?
I'm not writing it.
Yeah, it will have to be. I mean, we don't...if that's council's direction, we don't have a choice.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Is there gonna be three votes on this next week?
Well, I want to see what the report says.
The report says. We have to talk about it next week. Let's bring it back. We have to bring it back.
So, my...okay, my concern is that there is a timeline here?
I know.
Okay?
That's why we're saying next week.
Okay, so, if we can do this in two phases, if staff can work on the part that has nothing to do with SafeView, which staff is able to do without council direction, they can bring back the report for the SafeView part next week, and then you guys can make the determination on the SafeView part next week.
With all due respect, council members, Satya and I'll have to check with staff, and we need to look at the language of the grant to make sure that...
Cheryl from PD has looked at the language and has gone through the webinar.
I understand.
There's...
Okay, so is there a motion?
So, can that be the motion?
The motion is to bring it back next week.
Okay, can staff work on the non-SafeView stuff in the meantime?
If they can.
I'll have to check with staff. I can't, as I sit here, I can't make that promise. I'm not disputing what you said, but I'll have to confirm with staff.
The chief is here.
We're...we are going way over the parameters...
I just want to know if Cheryl's available to work on that, chief.
Evening. We'll be a part of getting the solution and getting it turned around. I would remind all of you that PD, as Cheryl did the, you know, kind of exploring of it all, PD cannot be the lead on it to submit this grant. We're happy to help. We'll, you know, offer staff and be a part of it, but we cannot be the lead on it because we can't be the lead in applying for it.
But you can...so, in checking with Cheryl, you guys can work on the application. The submission part has to be from the city manager's office.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion? 12B.
Yeah.
Make the motion.
I'll make the motion for it to come back for next week.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Assadurian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Epstein. Next, please.
Next is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We have several cards and callers on this item, and I will begin with Mike Herman. Is no longer here. Beth Brooks, you have five minutes.
Now you see what dogs you're sitting next to. Now you see them, what they do to you. Now you see who they are. And you should have always known who they were, and I don't know what they promised you or what you promised them, but they're dogs. Because this was about the money. This was not about holding an event...it doesn't matter what the event was for. It doesn't even ma...I mean, look, these are not decent people, a lot of them, and a lot of them aren't. It's really irrelevant. I tell you, it's really irrelevant. What you did to him is really horrible. I can read to you what he wrote about me, which I will, but what you did to him is really disgusting to give them money, because they didn't need this money. What the hell? I don't even...you people are really...I can't take you seriously about any...you're gonna have a budget meeting, and you're gonna talk about money, and you tell me this is symbolic? We had to give them money for a picnic. They have money. Anyway, all right, that's an agenda item, so we ought to want to discuss this in case Mr. Brotman freaks out.
That's our grumbling.
Yeah, yes, the grumbling, okay. But I'm gonna say that I'm the only person in this room, I believe, who belongs to a marginalized community. I'm a Jew. And after the Glendale...and he's laughing because you're not, because you're a left-wing Jew, and a lot of left-wing Jews align themselves with groups that are anti-Semitic. So, I got to be told by this little pishe back here that I'm a Nazi, when in these extremist groups and in Glendale, there are actual Nazis. There are people vilifying Israel and the Jews on a daily...I can't even imagine...the comments I read are actually unbelievable. People even told me Armenians were anti-Semitic, and I didn't believe them. I was like, "What the hell am I reading? I can't even believe the things I'm reading." Because I actually love the Armenian community. A few weeks ago, I was gonna come in here and tell you a story about my daughter who actually left her bag on the floor in a parking lot near Coffee Bean, because she works at Banfield, and drove away. Two Armenian men saw her do that and held onto the bag for her, a little old man and a middle-aged man, hoping she would come back. She did come back. And I told you, the only reason you got your bag back is because you live in an Armenian community. Because these...this community, their values are about family and caring and community, and otherwise, your bag would have been gone, baby. So, now, when I'm seeing groups like this, the level of hate against Jews...I had to walk down Glendale Boulevard after the bicycle event. Every lamppost had a poster, and I have pictures of it, about the genocide in Gaza, about they didn't get any food, which is a lie. A war is not a genocide. You know, my daughter is half-Israeli, and the hate that I'm reading from these groups is just...it's something I don't even know what to say. I don't even know what to say. I don't see you addressing that. There was one incredible Armenian man who, you know I'm a crier, and I wanted to cry in his arms, who basically said that you should be calling this out. I don't even know how the police stood there on the same Glendale Boulevard and saw those signs and left them there. I went to the police today. They told me that I have to call code enforcement or something like that to get the signs down that are still there, that I happened to buy a huge magic marker for, and I blackened them all out. So, in case anybody's listening, you know, when you put something up that has Jew hate, you're gonna see me. Okay, so I'm marginalized. The gay community is not marginalized. And you don't look at their Instagram accounts. Do you not know what's being posted on people's accounts? Do you not know the vile hatred that's out there? It's something out of this world. I don't even...I almost have no words. And I'll just read to you what they...it was very, you know, not such a big deal what they wrote about me, but it was honorable mention to some person named Beth Brooks. She made several public comments opposed to any spending on anything ever that is not affordable housing. In classic boomer fashion, I'm a boomer, so I actually learned how to think. Spending on community is bad, but spending on her most important issue is key, because affordable housing...forget affordable...picnics are what people need money for, but not paying their rent. That's what Ellen and Brotman and Arti think, okay? And then he said, "I have Tuesday evening ranting about $5,000 picnics or looking like an absolute jerk, explaining why scholarships for kids from historically marginalized communities..." He's gonna tell me about historically marginalized community? That little nobody? Unmarginalized, not him. So, you know what? Shame on you once again.
Next is Glendale Yimby. You have five minutes.
Let's not trade insults, folks. Unless you're, of course, speaking during public comment, not in the back of the room.
Hello, City Council. I want to thank you for changing your position on Senate Bill 79. A couple weeks ago, you were officially opposed to it. You changed your position to neutral. I want to thank you. It just passed the Senate floor by one vote today, so I just want to sincerely thank you. Myself and all the pro-housing people in the city, thank you for not officially opposing that bill and just being neutral on it. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Next is Sarah Halston. You have five minutes.
Good evening. I'm a managing attorney at Immigrant Defenders Law Center, and I'm a proud two-year Glendalean. As some of you have seen in the news, ICE is making arrests at a rate that we've never seen before. I was at Santa Ana Immigration Court several days in the past few weeks, and a client, now client, was arrested Thursday. He still has a pending immigration proceeding. We don't know why he was arrested, but someone... but someone called me before he was my client and said, "Hey, can you look up, like, where he is?" So I go to the ICE locator, I look him up. It says Glendale Police Department. I go, "That can't be right. We have sanctuary city laws. We have SB 50, 54, that says very explicitly, local law enforcement cannot provide resources, including cells, to immigration enforcement." California's a sanctuary state. We've obviously been attacked by it, but that is California law. So I go, "This can't be true." I go to the Glendale Police Department. They were very nice to me. They let me see my client, but my client was dropped off by ICE at about, I don't know, 3:00 or 4:00 PM that day. And when I was talking to one of the officers, he said, "Oh yeah, under Obama, this happened constantly. We had ICE detainees coming in and out." I got Cal DOJ involved. They found out that there's a 2007 agreement between the Department of Homeland Security and the City of Glendale from 2007. It provides that Glendale, the city itself, is a service provider that detains ICE detainees at a fixed-rate agreement, and it says specifically, because I have a copy here from FOIA, "Any provision contrary to state or other local law is null and void." So, we haven't got, I was able to email the chief of police. He hasn't been able to answer me at this point. I don't know if they're still investigating. But I really wanted to bring this to you today, and I'd love for a group to look into it. I'd love to work with city council. There have been reporters involved, but I just want to bring to your guys' attention that there's a California state law that was passed in 2018 that specifically says local and state police departments are not supposed to, and it explicitly says not supposed to house ICE detainees for any period of time, and that this 2007, almost decade-old law is in violation. The only thing we can think of that, why the police department is still doing this, is maybe this state law doesn't act retroactively, right? So it doesn't make old contracts void. But I got confirmation this afternoon, coming to this meeting, that the Glendale PD agreement is, if not the only one left, one of the only, like, grandfathered-in contracts. So I want to ask you, do you want Glendale to be one of the only cities that allows local police department to work with the Department of Homeland Security? So that they, they can just house and detain a lot of our immigrant sisters and brothers, like Glendale is a city of immigrants, without immigration attorneys being able to contact them, without knowing what the police departments need from us to get to our clients? And the bigger issue here is, and this happened with my client that I am now representing, when I met with him, he said he hadn't eaten for about 10 hours. Now, when ICE drops off a detainee to another place that's not ICE, they can say, "Oh, you know, that, those regulations that we have that say they have to eat every five to six hours, yeah, it's out of our hands. We gave it to Glendale PD, so it's on them now." And Glendale isn't held by those rules. So that is a direct violation of federal government law that we found. But when ICE is allowed to drop them off at a city or a state police department, they're not actually held to the same laws, and people like my client might not have access to water and food, which happened this last week. So, I have two asks for you guys. The first is, can you look into this? Can you work, can we work with the Glendale Police Department to figure out, first, are we still going by this 2007 agreement that I have? It's an IGSA, Intergovernmental Service Agreement. And second, why are we one of the only cities that has about a decade-old agreement that's in violation of state law? That is clearly SB 54, become like a tenant of California law? And can we work on something to maybe get rid of this, so that we don't have violations like what happened this week? Thank you.
Thank you. Question?
Hi, ma'am. For clarifying purposes, our PD's still in the box, so happy to have you have that conversation with them. But because you did make some comments around eating and so forth, I had received several phone calls Saturday morning from a council member in Los Angeles, and then in Burbank and so forth. I connected with our chief, who specifically noted that when the client was in our holding, they were provided food and water. That might have not been the case wherever they were coming from. This is an issue that I had brought forth before the change in the administration. This was a discussion on this dais in providing clear information from our PD that we do not get involved. We are not even booking them, that they are using the cell as a holding place in the city of Glendale. And so, I think we've all continuously asked our chief to provide an update on, on the status, and so I just, I think especially when it comes to treatment and food and our values here, I just wanted to make sure that you were clear on that, that those things are not happening here. And so, I think when it comes to SB 54, the chief stood where you're standing now and talked about how we are in full compliance of SB 54. So, that's where I'm gonna leave it at.
Okay.
Plus, our jails are way better than county jail.
Yeah.
In fact, Kiefer, Kiefer Sutherland paid up to $500 a night to stay in our jail to avoid counting.
So...
Cannot have a debate, ma'am.
Oh, yeah, no, it's not a debate. I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Just, okay.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Next speaker?
Next is Ellen Dish. You have five minutes.
City Council, thank you. I promised to not use the full five minutes, but thank you for precisely preserving the five minutes. Also apologies to Mr. Brodmann for the water spilling, like, earlier. And I want to, of course, vouch for Ms. Beth Brooks. About two, three weeks ago, we went to IHOP after council, as sometimes we do. I a leftist, she a conservative, but it, it went well. And on the way up going on Glen Oaks, no, Glendale, there was a dog on the loose, and I pulled over, she opened the door. I hope I can share, and the dog basically was saved, thanks to Ms. Beth Brooks. So, to her character and so on, I don't think we should go around canceling people. That's my problem. I agree with some of the excesses of, let's say, glendale extremism or whatever.com, is that it's this logic of canceling, and you cannot even defend yourself, you know? So, but all I would say, yes, is that I remember going to play piano, when there was a piano, on the street on brand, and I saw posters there that, I'm sorry to say, were also offensive from the other side, which was of you, Mr. Brodmann, unfortunately, if I can say, and, like, identifying you as a groomer, okay, I ripped it up and so on. I would have done it if it was anyone else. I'm just saying that, like, we should be very, very attentive here to bad extremism, but there's also good extremism, and then I'll stop. Take my eternal example, Mr. Donald Trump, president, sheriff in town, that, how did he win? Not by what Democrats did, oh, let's go to the middle, let's try to get those votes. No. He went more extreme, and precisely, he won. So, that would be my appeal to the Democrats and so on, but that's all I have to say, basically. I, again, I respect your dignity, Mr. Najarian. I'm very sorry that the Blair Academy got closed. It's, I, I was, I've been following it even from before, when AGBU, I mean, General Benevolent Union in Pasadena closed down. Your sister led a valiant effort there and so on. Like, I, I am just, again, worried about the exclusivity of designating each other with these radical terms. I stop. I stop for, for the, for the sake of Glendale. But I, I'll be back. I, I'm sure I had something else to say, but good night. Thank you.
We have several callers. The first caller is Seth Anisich. Seth, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Oh, thank you very much. Hello, City Council. Thank you very much for taking the time. My name is Seth Anisich. I have been a resident of Glendale, I've been a resident of Glendale for over 30 years, and I'm a member of Glendale Out. And we would really like to take the time and thank you for the helping of funding. And like Ellen said, it was more symbolic than anything. When, we've been funding that, our events, especially this event, since its inception from donations and our own pocket. When I heard the news, when we heard the news, the city was actually going to consider doing this, we, we thought, great, the city is gonna help us. You know, many council members have been to our events and have said that the city should actually help us fund these, events, help fund events like this.
It's on the agenda item.
Unfortunately, for the past five weeks and four meetings, four meetings of city council...
Okay, so, sir, you are speaking to an item that was on our agenda, and we reserved this time for items that were not on the agenda, that are in the general jurisdiction of the city.
Oh, okay, well, I, I, well, I'm basically trying to, should I try it back some other time? I'm just trying to thank you all.
Yes, next week would, ironically, next week is a better time to discuss it than this week.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you so much.
All right, our next caller is Joseph. Joseph, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members. This is Joseph Cascanian. I'm calling in regards to, there's a Glendale Community College building in Montrose that's just been vacant for so long. And I believe there was a Glendale Occupational Center right next door to it. I just wanted to see if there's any plans. I don't know if this is in the purview of city council, but, or if it's even city property. But I was just wondering to see if there's gonna be any movement in regards to building that or utilizing that space for, like, occupational center or whatever it's gonna be used for. But I just wanted to bring it up to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mauro Yakubian. You're on air. You have five minutes.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to start off by saying that, per the United States Department of Education, June is Title IX month. Save girls' sports. But I want to start off by asking the City of Glendale to explicitly and officially state what a woman is. You have created a commission on the status of women. Don't you think, as citizens, we should know how you define woman? The commission was created to ensure the equality of rights for women. If we are paying for a commission to exist in this city, then why not be very clear who that commission is supposed to serve? I find it hypocritical that these commissions representatives came to council tonight to receive accommodation for the LGBT community, which has been actively attacking and eroding the rights of girls and women. This past weekend, we saw biological males competing against girls and resoundingly and unfairly defeating all of them in track and field championship events. Why doesn't the Women's Commission make a statement in support of those girls whose federal rights under Title IX are being violated? Why are they accepting accommodation on their behalf of a group that is hell-bent on destroying the rights of women and girls? The LGBTQ group Glendale Out is part of those who are violating the rights of these girls. The Glendale Out founder was violating law by videotaping minors in a public bathroom. Artie Ellen and Dan, you completely ignored the voice of the people and just voted to give $5,000 to this individual who's been videotaping little girls so he can have a picnic. You are condoning their actions with your generous gift to them, we will not forget, and with your tone-deaf decisions, you three have just officially cemented your place in Glendale civic history as the worst council members of all time. But in regard to the Women's Commission, where in the hell was it when the mothers in this community have been fighting to protect their children from the filth in the GUSD curriculum? Was it because the mothers and women were conservatives? Where was that commission when the Armenian woman was being mocked by Galas? I asked the chair, Diane Lambalot, to condemn the mockery at the time, and she refused to even entertain it. Where was the commission on the status of women then? Why aren't they standing up for women and girls to feel safe? But I suppose it was because the commission has been too busy peddling the woke progressive agenda that Ellen Asatryan and Susie Abadjan have been bringing down from Sacramento. Remember when our commission on the status of women was used to support Governor Newsom's bill allowing Arizona abortion doctors to work in California? Stop a minute and think about that agenda item, that the City of Glendale commission on the status of women was actually entertaining. Is that what we want this commission to be doing? The reason why is because this commission is being used as a political arm for the progressives in this chamber. The commission is being used by the progressive staff and council members to push the agenda, and I'm asking you all to please look at the agendas yourself. The commission, which is directed by progressive Susie Abadjan, should be reevaluated, and in my opinion, be completely dismantled. The hypocrisy is sickening. Thank you.
Last call is by Corey Decola. You have five minutes. You're on air.
Thank you so much, city staff. Council members Brodmann, Asatryan, and Kasakian, thank you so much for your support tonight. And I just wanted to point out the complete divisiveness made by Najarian and Garpechian. And the abstention vote, as you can clearly tell, Ellen, was a slap in your face. The complete misogyny that he showed there was just out of line, unbecoming of a mayor, not for the best interest of the city. That's why he got passed up as mayor last time. Unfortunately, Garpechian got passed up this time around, but, you know, that, that happens. Sorry about that. You know, after hearing about the immigration issue and the detention and holding of an ICE detainee, you know, it's appalling, considering you're literally breaking the law, even just by holding him there. And I really hope this attorney, this immigration attorney, comes hard, and you really know what it's like to, to go against the law. Speaking of against the law, some of those statements made by you are, were libelous, and the ones that you named, I really hope they took notes, and I really hope they took screenshots and, and screen recordings and use that against you. And, you know, you can't really be saying these things. You, you should really be careful of what you say, because actions do have consequences. You might not think they do, but they will. And, you know, I really don't appreciate how you treated our community in the past from the transphobic remarks, from the homophobic attacks, from everything you've said and done, and the sneering and the snickering while I walked past you from the podium several weeks back. You know, it's, it's frustrating to see our mayor and our city council, one of the city council members who clearly doesn't have any idea about what's going on, who says at every meeting, "I don't know, what's this about?" You know, "Let me take a look at the report," when he had a week to look at the report, or, you know, "It's sitting right in front of him, and he just doesn't know." And that's you, Mr. Garpechian. You know, there's been some, there's been some things from all of y'all that I have not agreed with. There have been some things with all of y'all that I have agreed with. But this has taken the top of the cake, you know? These two decisions tonight really brought out your true colors for everyone in the community. Ellen Dish was really off his rocker, and Mauro Yakubian was off her rocker, too. You know, she, she has a few nuts loose and a bolt not tightened. This is, this is probably gonna be my last call to the city council. I just wanted to let you know that I'm really disappointed in y'all and the way you've treated the community, not just the LGBTQ plus community, but all the community of Glendale. You decided to spend $30 million on battery parts, but you couldn't give five, or you did give $5,000, but with a dissension of two particular people. So, it's just frustrating. I really hope, Ellen, you get your, you get your application through for this SafeView. It's a great thing, and clearly, some of our council members and mayor just do not care about the safety of our women. And I really hope that goes through. So, thank you so much for your time this evening, and that's all out of me. You all have a wonderful life. Goodbye.
Thank you, and that was the last call.
Okay, do we have any new business?
Yes, we do. I move that the city attorney is hereby authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with the law firm of Best, Best &amp; Krieger to assist the city attorney in a matter. In addition to other provisions... In addition to other provisions, the retainer agreement must contain a fee cap for work as assigned by the city attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members Asadurian?
Yes.
Brothman?
Yes.
Karpetian? Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Does that conclude new business? Okay, is there a motion?
I move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.